Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll to establish a quorum?
Councilmember Laloe. Councilmember Laloe.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Chenier.
I didn't get that. Could you try again?
Here.
Councilmember Gata.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
I am here.
Councilmember Vang.
Here.
Mayor Steinberg.
I am here.
And I expect Mayor Protam Ashby momentarily.
All right, thank you very much. Welcome.
Mayor, may I just say that your mic and Mindy's mic are really hot? So maybe you could throttle them back just a little bit.
I will have IT do that.
I try to be soft spoken. Here we go. Is that any better?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Harris, we have a new city employee with city clerk's office by the name of Hong Tran, and she's in the chambers with the city manager, city clerk. And now, I would ask, would you mind leading us in the pledge of allegiance, please? Thank you very much. Welcome to you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, members, we do not have a consent calendar today. But we do begin, Madam Clerk, with a special presentation recognizing our colleague, Councilmember Mai Vang, in honor of Asian Pacific Islanders Heritage Month by the League of Women Voters. And I believe Susie Baker, who is the president of the Sacramento League of Women Voters, is here to make the presentation.
Yes, Ms. Baker is online.
There we go. I'm sorry, I had to re-log in. My speaker wasn't working. Okay, my name is Susie Barker, and I'm proud to make this presentation. And thank you very much, council, for allowing us to make this presentation. Resolution and appreciation for Mai Vang. Whereas Mai Vang, the eldest of 16 children of refugee Hmong family, earned degrees from the University of San Francisco and UCLA before returning to Sacramento to strive for educational equality for all students who lack resources. Whereas Mai Vang has exemplified commitment to advancing educational opportunities for all by serving with the Buck Scholars Association and by teaching in Ethnic Studies Department at CSUS and the Department of Asian American Studies at UC Davis. Whereas Mai Vang, an outspoken advocate for basic constitutional freedoms, including voting rights, co-founded Sacramento's Hmong Innovating Politics to strengthen civic engagement by focusing on low voter propensity areas and on high school and college students. Whereas Mai Vang, a community leader and ardent grassroots organizer, was elected trustee Area Five on the Sacramento City Unified School Board in 2016, and in 2020 became the first Hmong woman elected to the Sacramento City Council. And whereas Mai Vang, Sacramento City Council member of District Eight, recognizes that access to educational support and community-based voter education drives are effective in empowering disenfranchised communities and in turn engendering new and diverse leadership. Now therefore be it resolved that the League of Women Voters of Sacramento County hereby celebrates Mai Vang's role as the first Hmong member of the Sacramento City Council, honors Mai Vang's advocacy for Sacramento's Hmong community, residents of District Eight, and the city at large in her work to extend fair representation and gender equality, and values Mai Vang's vision of championing our most fundamental democratic exercise, the right to vote and the right to seek elected office so as to extend representation to all, even in the face of diversity. Presented by Susie Barker for the League of Women Voters of Sacramento County. Thank you.
Well, I thank you, Ms. Barker. We are proud to be serving alongside a pioneer, Councilmember Mai Vang. And we really appreciate you choosing to honor our colleague, especially in the midst of Asian Pacific Islanders Heritage Month. Appropriate and a great way to start the meeting. Councilmember Vang, do you want to? Maybe you don't want to say anything. Go ahead.
I'll say a few words. Yeah, I didn't know that it was coming to council. So I, first, I just want to say, I just want to thank League of Women Voters for presenting the reso and just honoring me today. You know, I ran for city council not to be the first Asian woman, but really because I love this city and I love this community where I was born and raised. I'm just so honored every single day when I wake up to have the ability and the privilege of serving a city that I love so much. And as we're celebrating Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, I'd just like to say, I actually like to dedicate this recognition to all of the incredible, strong, fierce, amazing, stubborn Asian American and Pacific Islander women in Sacramento, you know, all our grandmothers, our mothers, our sisters, our aunties, and so many that are not recognized and are rendered invisible, who have paved the way for so many of us, those who are not written in history books that we don't read about. So really want to dedicate this resolution to them. And I want to say thank you again to the League of Women Voters for recognizing me. But it's not just me, right? I think it's all of us, you know, serving on this dais and all the folks, the entire village, that makes it possible for all nine of us to be, you know, serving the city. And so thank you so much just for honoring me today. Really appreciate it. And happy Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month to all of you.
Thank you again, Councilmember Vang. And thank you to the League of Women Voters. Again, great way to start the meeting. If I may, a point of privilege for one of my colleagues here, even though this is not on the agenda. This is the holy period of Ramadan. And I know Councilmember Sean Laloe wanted to just make a comment, recognizing the importance of this time. And it is very important. So without objection, I'm going to just allow Councilmember Laloe the floor to talk about Ramadan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And mega congratulations to my colleague, Councilmember Vang. You truly do deserve it. And what I'm about to state here, it was actually something that my colleague, again, the wonderful Councilmember Vang, had discussed with me. And we talked, and she said, you take it and you run with it. So I truly do appreciate you, and I'm very thankful that I can call you my colleague and a friend. So thank you so much. I'd like to recognize and congratulate the American Muslims here in Sacramento and around the world for the month of Ramadan. Ramadan is the holiest month of the Islamic calendar that lasts 29 to 30 days. Ramadan is deeply spiritual time of reflection and renewal meant to increase thankfulness and consciousness of God's mercy. Muslims honor each day of Ramadan as a day of patient endurance through fasting from sunrise to sundown, meaning no food, no water, and no water. And each night as a night of gratitude through prayers. Ramadan is a time in which families and communities come together for eftar, which is at sundown, and prayers in festive gathering that demonstrate the rich and diverse traditions of Muslim societies and cultures. Ramadan is a time to reinforce faith, compassion, and forgiveness and dedication through adversity. In this month of giving, Muslims worldwide reach out to assist those afflicted by conflict, hunger, poverty, and disease. More than 75,000 Muslims reside here in Sacramento, 30 mosques, two full-time Islamic schools, and nine Muslim associations contributing to its economy and social fabric. We have seen their great contribution to medicine, science, technology, education, and many other fields. I know I can say this on behalf of all my colleagues, that we want to extend our warmest wishes to Muslim Americans and Muslims around the world. Ramadan khati. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ramadan mubarak. Thank you so much to Sean and to all the Muslim-American residents of Sacramento. We're very proud of your contributions to our community and wish you a peaceful fast and a wonderful holiday. All right, members, we now move to the discussion calendar, and we have four important items. And of course, we're going to begin with our colleague, Councilmember Jeff Harris from District Three, for his presentation on the City Master Siting Plan. I don't think I'm going to give the same introduction I've given every week, because I think everybody gets it by now, what we are trying to do here. One vote, master siding, everything after that implementation. And it's a big task, but we're up to it. And so I turn it over to Councilmember Harris, who's worked very hard on homelessness over the course of his tenure on the city council, to hear what you have to say. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, I appreciate your effort to bring this to the forefront. Clearly homelessness is a task that we must face head-on and energetically. And so you've brought the discussion to the fore. It's very important to move forward. And so I am very pleased to have this time to present my ideas about homelessness and solutions to homelessness, as well as citing possibilities and what has been going on in District Three in this regard. So Mindy, if you could please put up the slideshow. Thank you very much. So what I'd like to do, first and foremost, is to thank my staff. Jocelyn created this slide deck. She worked very hard on it, and I'm proud of her. David gathered together a lot of the information for it. And of course, Stephanie is the mother and glue that holds our office together. I want to talk about the existing conditions in District Three around homelessness, our previous efforts to address homelessness, current projects, and then, of course, close with proposed solutions, shelter sites, safe ground options. And, you know, I'd like to start by saying, where is a very fundamental question? Where to put up homeless programs? You have to have space to do it. But of course, as important are what, how, and when to achieve these programs. And I hope to shed some light on some of those issues. Next slide, please, Mindy. Thank you. You know, as other members have done, I just wanted to point out the demographics of District Three. A lot of people don't realize even that District Three spans both sides of the American River. So I have East Sacramento, Sac State on the south side. And on the north side, an awful lot, like Cal Expo, the River District, the rail yards. Actually, they're on the south side. And then across the river, we have Natomas, South Natomas, North Gate, and Gardenlands, River Gardens. It's a very diverse district. If you look at this map, you can see District Three superimposed upon it. Clearly, the minority percentage in East Sacramento is less than a third. But in the River District and the rail yards, the rest of the district, the minority percentage is much higher. We have a very strong Latino population in North Gate. And I would have to say that in Gardenland, it's one of the most diverse areas in the entire city. There is one apartment complex where I've heard nine separate languages spoken. Yeah, it's really a melting pot, to be sure. Additionally, as far as income, we have some of the wealthiest and some of the most income-challenged people in the entire city. Next slide, please, Mindy. So where are the homeless in D3? On this graphic, you can see that the American River Parkway, the Lower American River Parkway bisects my district, right down the middle. About three-plus miles of the American River flows through my district. And of course, that presents lots of camping opportunities for homeless individuals. I have participated in the last three point-in-time counts. And one thing that doesn't happen is counting on the Parkway. The point-in-time count is held at night. And of course, it would be challenging and somewhat dangerous to get out on the Parkway to count homeless individuals under those conditions. So in, you know, in honesty, we don't have a clear number of how many people are camping on the American River Parkway, but it is a very substantial number, as evidenced by North Gate and 160, where it is pretty obvious in plain sight. You know, we have an awful lot of the unhoused population in District Three as a result of the American River Parkway. We have hotspots, the Parkway being the principal one. The River District has a huge homeless population for several reasons. One is the attractiveness of loaves and fishes and the availability of sustenance. Others are the preponderance of service providers in the area, which have sprung up over the last 30 years. South Natomas has impacts from people camping on the Parkway along Garden Highway. More recently, Johnson Business Park has become home to a tremendous number of car campers. And Point West is feeling that as well. East Sacramento also, the Alhambra Corridor, we've got less of impacts there, and even around Sac State as well. You know, many of these campers are tied to the river. One thing we have found is that along the Parkway, the population are the chronically homeless. They're older, have a lot of physical infirmities, a lot of mental infirmities. There's tremendous drug use. And one of the challenges that I face in my work with homelessness is the secondary challenge of trying to protect the ecology of the American River Parkway. It's tremendously challenging, considering the impacts of the homeless campers. It's a perennial problem that I share with Supervisor Serna, and to a certain extent with Supervisor Desmond. It's an ongoing problem that we have made some progress on. Certainly, the county, of course, has the charge of the American River Parkway, but we collaborate on all of these issues. Next slide, please. So here's a bright spot. And I'm happy to say that, you know, actually, this exercise to understand all of the possibilities for housing in District Three, I was unaware of some of these. Currently, we have built 964 affordable units, regulated affordable units in District Three. That's quite a large number. We have housing choice vouchers being used in District Two, the tune of 1,065. There are public housing units. On this graphic, you can see number 10 and number 30 in East Sac and number 10 up in North Gate. Those are places that are owned by SHRA, owned and operated by SHRA as public housing. But here's the best part. Planned in District Three right now, 780 regulated affordable units. Some are being built in Mirasol Village. Some are planned, and some are not yet planned. This council voted to surplus property at Foam Ranch Road by Natomas High School. That means that 15% of the units there at least will be affordable. We don't have a number on that yet, but I think it will be substantial and encouraging. So that is definitely a bright picture. Next slide, please. As I said, in the River District, because there is such a burgeoning homeless population in the area, there are service providers to provide help to those homeless individuals. You can see from this map that almost all of the service providers in the city are represented here. VOA, Hope Cooperative, Turning Point El Hogar, Women's Empowerment Shelter, Inc., the number of services at Loaves and Fishes, Salvation Army, Frances House. Cottage housing, it's very intense, is what I'm trying to say, in the River District. As this council knows, the River District feels pretty beleaguered by homelessness and the impacts of homelessness, and is not amenable to new services being provided in the area. I agree with them. There's clearly a lot of service providers there already. It is not my intention to introduce any new programs in the River District, and I'll get to that in a minute as to why. Before we move on, I would like to, I have two guests. And so I would like to introduce first Steve Waters of First Step Communities. Steve is somebody who I've worked with now for years on homelessness issues. There are a few people in this world that I describe as elegant, and he is one of them. He has a true compassionate heart, and he's becoming a big player in our homeless siding master plan, in that he is running a couple of safe ground areas and certainly a couple of our overnight respite centers. So Steve, if you could hop on and explain a little bit about First Step and introduce yourself.
Sure, I believe. Can you all hear me now?
Yes, gotcha.
Thank you for the introduction. My name is Steve Waters with First Step Communities. And I have, the last few years, worked quite a bit with Councilmember Harris, both implementing some new programs and improving some programs. We currently run within the district, the North A Street Campus Shelter Services. And we added, with the council members, sanitation program that's really helped the neighborhood there. That particular facility has 80 adults, men and women, and some pretty intensive case management with a lot of strong collaboration with other service providers, including my partners just down the street, like Women's Empowerment. We also bring in WE for Domestic Violence Support, people like Northern California Construction Training for some employment skills training and others. I know my time is very limited. I look forward to continuing to help any way I can as this project towards the master plan goes forward. And as we can expand what we do as COVID lifts and we get into a post-COVID period. I've had some great discussions recently with the council member about sites, about the size of sites, the scope of the services provided. I think there's a lot of opportunity here. And I'm looking forward to continuing to work with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. I sure appreciate all that you've added to this conversation in Sacramento over the years. Next, I'd like to introduce one of my favorite people in town, who is, you know, really brilliant in many ways. So Lisa Colt runs Women's Empowerment, and she has altered the trajectory of many lives for many women on the street. She's been doing this work for, you know, at least two decades that I know of. And her program is just incredible. Lisa, would you say a few words about Women's Empowerment?
Yes, Jeff, I would be very pleased to. And thank you for inviting me to be here today. I know that each council member is working hard to develop solutions to address our housing crisis, and that you've asked me to speak briefly about Women's Empowerment and the specific needs of housing for women and children. I founded Women's Empowerment 20 years ago this year. And so we're celebrating 20 years of educating and empowering women who are experiencing homelessness with the skills and the confidence to get a job, create a healthy life, and regain a safe home for themselves and for their children. Since 2001, 1,702 women have graduated from Women's Empowerment with their 3,793 children. We've spent the last 19 years creating innovative solutions to the challenges of homelessness for women and children. And we've always pivoted our programs, not our mission, to meet the most urgent needs of women who are experiencing homelessness. When the Great Recession hit, we created paid training programs to ensure graduates would not fall back into homelessness. When the affordable housing crisis intensified, we created our Property Management Paid Training Program in partnership with the Institute for Real Estate Management to ensure the graduates could find work in a career that provides housing on the properties that they manage. When the pandemic and stay-at-home order hit in March 2020, our social workers and employment specialists called over 300 graduate families to see how they were doing and what we could do to support them. We were shocked to find out that over half of the women had already been laid off. And they were in tremendous fear of falling back into homelessness after working so hard to secure employment and housing. So we began expanding paid training programs in what we're calling recession-resistant industries and developing new pipeline employers, for example, with Grid Alternatives, which is a solar energy company, training in medical assistance program through Kaiser and SEIU. Despite the pandemic and the high unemployment and persistent high cost of housing, we're proud to say that in 2020, 976 women and their children received services at Women's Empowerment. We held 14 paid training programs for nine-week socially-distanced in-person sessions. 177 women secured employment. 144 women and children secured housing or maintained their housing. Although we're exceptionally proud of these statistics, we know this isn't the whole story. And as you know, according to head Sacramento, it's the highest percentage of families sleeping outside of any large metropolitan area in the country. So Women's Empowerment is at your service to support all housing options that are very low-income, safe for women and children, and meet basic health standards and respect the human dignity of women and children. I was the founding director of Quinn Cottages, which I now call the very first tiny home project in Sacramento. And in my many years of experience, what I have found makes housing programs effective is the ability to build community. When people have a sense of ownership and accountability to their community, they will be, there will be far fewer problems. Secondly, wraparound services, services that address the trauma of domestic violence and homelessness, both for the women and their children. They'll need easy access and, easy and timely access to mental health services, substance abuse treatment, and job training. A location that has access to public transportation and a safe place to park their car, because for many, that's been their home. Women's Empowerment is happy to do outreach and encourage women to enroll in our employment readiness and empowerment programs. In addition, we provide on-site trauma-informed childcare for infants and toddlers. Our goal is to do whatever it takes to provide the best housing resources for women and children and to work together with the council to do that. So thank you.
Lisa, thank you so much. It's always a complete pleasure to work with you. And really, it's nothing short of miraculous what you've achieved. And it's such a joy to go to the graduation ceremonies at Women's Empowerment and see the difference that you can make in a life. Next slide, please, Mindy. So I want to just briefly show a couple of things that are going on in D3. In Johnson Business Park, Lathrich Way Commerce Circle, you can see here a line of campers. This is happening all around the city. There are almost 100 campers along this area. It looks pretty tidy, which is great. And the reason for that is Bridget Dean and Forensic Clean. This picture was taken shortly after a cleanup, and we're very grateful for those services. This council allocated a lot of money for Forensic Clean to help manage some of the trash aspects of homelessness. Marcos Brittan and I met out here to discuss the issue, because the businesses are feeling the impacts of the homeless campers. And he'll be putting out an article on this very shortly, so keep your eyes open for that. Next slide, please. So this is what it looks like in the River District. And it has looked like this for the last number of years. How did we get here? Why are people living like this? A lot of people living and housing don't quite comprehend what's going on when they see a picture like this. You know, because of the Great Recession and then followed by the COVID pandemic, an awful lot of people have fallen into homelessness. We have rising rental rates. It's a big problem. We also have issues like the no-bail order put out by the Judicial Council, the Martin v. Boise decision, and the county health order that have eroded our toolkit to actually manage the camping on the street. These are difficult problems. You know, the impacts are great, and they are citywide. These are difficult problems. Um, you know, the impacts are great and they are citywide. Uh, the trash, the crime, the lack of safety. It's a, it's a big problem. A large segment of our house population are extremely discouraged. With the state of our city. Next, next slide, Mindy. So what have we been doing in District Three to deal with this? One of my first efforts was to create the Pit Stop Program depicted here in pictures. Which was a mobile sanitation unit. We had public defecation to an extent in the River District. That was quite frankly shocking and probably, uh, well, I should say possibly could have led to real health issues. Uh, there was, you know, an outbreak of HEPA in San Diego. We were worried about that in the River District. So following in the footsteps of people in San Francisco who created the Pit Stop Program. I convinced this council to allocate money. We bought this unit, deployed it in the River District. It was a successful, uh, program. It was used over two thousand, or twenty thousand times. And, uh, we collected seven hundred hypodermic needles, dispensed lots of, um, dog poop bags. It made a difference. And for the time that this unit was on Aherne in the River District, it was pristine. Part of the program was to pick up in an area around there. And at that time, Quinn Cottages and Women's Empowerment were just extremely thrilled with the project. The council decided ultimately it was too expensive and not to re-up the program. I can understand that, but in light of the money that we have now from CRF and ARP funds, it doesn't look all that expensive. This is Joshua's House. Uh, and I'm going to talk about this one a little bit more, but Joshua's House is a homeless hospice for people who are at the end of their life. Who are unhoused. Uh, we know that people die from terminal illnesses out in the bush. And it's, it's a horrible way to spend the end of your life. Marlene Von Friedrichs Fitzwater came forward with a program. That I think is stunning. We'll put, talk about that later. I brought forth micropad housing, which is stackable modulators that we could lease and, and a place to put them, although not in my district. Uh, because I sit on the RT board, I was able to surplus the property on Evergreen that was the old lumberjack warehouse. It is still an excellent possibility for housing, for permanent supportive or transitional housing. Um, and I hope that the council member in that district will be more amenable to such a project than the previous council member was. Next, uh, well, let's just move on to the next slide and I'll keep, I'll keep moving here. Mindy, next slide. So this is a project that we did affect. It was the first triage shelter in Sacramento on Railroad Drive. Um, I found this site after asking for two years. I finally got to a yes. I brought in Northern California Construction Training. Which were mostly formerly homeless people, uh, to get job training on site. We erected a lot of partitions. We work with VOA. This was a real learning experience for the city of Sacramento. It was the first time. That we had ever tried a low-barrier triage center. It had two hundred beds and the outcomes were very substantial. Uh, so in the end, we served six hundred and twenty-nine individuals, forty percent of them achieved housing in the end. Twenty-five percent permanent housing and then lesser percentages temporary housing, transitional and other homeless service. We learned a lot at the shelter and I certainly learned a lot. I learned how incredible volunteers of America are. And I want to thank Leo McFarlane, Kristi Holder, Sherman Haggerty, Amani, uh, Sowares Rapaski and Anna Darvins. For their intense effort on, on this shelter. We had good outcomes. It was, it was in place for about sixteen months and, uh, we housed about two hundred and sixty-four people. It was amazing, but we did some things not that well. Uh, we actually did do well for North Sacramento, in my opinion. The crime stats in the area were lowered because we had more police presence. Uh, we put a lot of cleaning efforts into the neighborhood. And we did well by North Sacramento, but I would say that we fell short, right? Immediately adjacent to the shelter on Railroad Avenue. Uh, we needed more intense management locally. And, uh, so moving on. Uh, Mindy, uh, one other thing I want to say here. I, speaking to the people who came into the shelter. Everybody had a story to tell and every single story involved a deep trauma in their life. Uh, you know, Councilmember Valensuela mentioned trauma-informed care in her presentation. And I have to say that that is exactly spot on in dealing with the homeless population. They fell into homelessness usually because of a series of bad decisions or bad victimizations. But their trauma was a part of everybody's story, and that certainly informs us about how to move forward. Of this population, we found that, uh, you know, about seventy percent of the population suffered from mental infirmities. And addiction, substance use disorder, or both combined. That's a big percentage, and that certainly informs how we move forward. Next slide, Mindy. Uh, I next pivoted to try to find more shelter beds, and so I asked SHRA to give me an inventory. Of all the underperforming motels in District Three, hoping that we could buy one. And turn it into transitional housing in an area that was already beleaguered with homelessness. Um, she came back not only with an inventory for District Three, but for the whole city. Which has turned out to be a very valuable exercise. So I tried to put together a program to buy Motel Six on Alhambra. It moved along pretty far down the road with Mercy Housing. In the end, it turns out that the complex lease agreements on this property were not something that we could solve, but we looked. At, uh, the Motel Six Hawthorne Suites, Roy and the Conna Lodge and Capitol Park, which is in D four. Which ended up being the next triage shelter that came about in the city inventory. So it was a great exercise, and then of course, moving on to Project Room Key, all of that work came to fruition. Uh, next slide, please, Mindy. This was a, a potential program that I built with, with, uh, Stephen Waters. First Step Communities had this original idea. And we have this property at North Gate and Patio that's owned by the city. And I thought this was a great fit to serve women and children, children who are unhoused. Who could go to the school across the street, Garden Valley Elementary. Uh, we worked with the administration there and they seemed quite amenable to the project. If we met certain circumstances which we were agreeing to do. So I brought this project out to the community at, at, for my first unveiling. Uh, to my surprise, there was a ver, an actual demonstration against it. Uh, there was tremendous angst in the community, and we barely were able to make our, our presentation. We were shouted down and much to my surprise, the school district there publicly withdrew their support. Well, this particular project could not work without collaboration with the school district in Garden Valley, so. We let this one fall by the wayside. Nonetheless, we still have this property available. And now I've pivoted to a different idea, and that is Joshua's House. The homeless hospice idea originally planned for the River District, and it was no small feat getting this approved by the River District Board. A, a building was purchased on North C Street. It proved to be too difficult to rehab. And then Joshua's House pivoted to, uh, a use with WellSpace down in Eric Gara's District on Stockton. Uh, that deal fell through, and so this very vital project is an orphan. I am here proposing that we do a homeless hospice use on the northernmost property shown here where it says Sacramento. Uh, it would only serve fifteen individuals, uh, would not need the collaboration with the school. Uh, people may wonder why I haven't done public outreach about this. It's because I just came up with this idea last week, and so outreach will certainly ensue. But it's a great project that I hope to move forward. Next slide, please, Mindy. Also, as part of my efforts, I managed to get approved and funded another sprung tent triage site at Arden. Uh, at the end of Ethan Way on Cal Expo Property. This council deemed it a worthy project. It would have been our first sprung tent shelter site. Uh, again, it was approved and funded, but there was tremendous opposition from the business community. And, uh, the State Fair Board at Cal Expo. Ultimately, we could not get a lease agreement signed by the Department of General Services. So this project is actually what moved to then Larry Carr's District and became the Metta View Shelter. Next slide, please, Mindy. Additionally, I took a big city team down to Modesto. To look at the Modesto Outdoor Emergency Shelter or the Mo's Shelter. They were, it was basically a four-hundred-person safe ground site. One of the first in the state. And we went on a fact-finding mission to understand what worked for them, what didn't. We came away with a lot of knowledge. Fortuitous for me, this is where I met Bridget Dean, and, uh, that has blossomed into a tremendous relationship. Next slide, please. So here you see some of the current projects, um, the Sure Centers, the Cal Expo trailers. There are currently fifty trailers there that were donated to us by the state. Sanitation trailers. I'm going to go through these. I'm going to walk through these in a series of slides. So next slide, please, Mindy. With CRF funds, I convinced this council to give me eight hundred thousand bucks. Working with SHRA, we have purchased fourteen sanitation trailers. Now, what you see before you here are solar-powered. They're not porta-potties. They are flush toilets with lavatories. And we have trucks to tow them as well. So we got eight of these trailers, an ADA restroom trailer, three shower trailers. And two combo ADA restroom shower trailers. So what are these for? These are to support all of the programs that myself and my colleagues are coming up with. I felt that we had to have the equipment to make safe ground work, and I can tell you. That at Railroad, we spent over three hundred and eleven thousand dollars renting, renting portable sanitation units. Well, now we own them thanks to the CRF funds, and these can be deployed. At Bridget Dean's will wherever they are needed for safe ground in any district, and I think that this is a very positive movement. Next slide, please. So here is something that I'm extremely proud of, and it is a program. That is so desperately needed because of the depth of substance use amongst the homeless population. Again. My estimation, and I think I can back it up, is that seventy percent of the population outdoors suffers from substance use disorder. If we don't deal with drugs head-on, we're not going to get on top of this problem. There is just no way. So working with WellSpace and Bridget Dean, we pulled together a team to talk about. How we would address drug addiction, specifically meth addiction and opioids in our community. And what we came up with is the Sure Center Substance Use Respite and Engagement Center. It's a voluntary place. Where people can go to come down off a high. And it is working. It's medically monitored. Um, services are provided there, snacks. Uh, th- this program in the very short time that it's been operational has pr- pr- uh, proved to be remarkably effective. I would like to thank Jonathan, Ben, Sean, Kristi and Gwen. At WellSpace for their incredible work, and also Bridget and Kelly Rivas for helping to get this started. Now, this was started also. With CRF funds, uh, coronavirus relief funds. The council deemed to give me a million dollars, uh, to get this out of the ground, and here's the beauty of this program. It is co-invested with the county. The county with the change of their county exec, and, and I thank you, Anne Edwards, very much for this. The county sees the value of this program and they are co-investing. Moving forward. This council can expect me to ask for, uh, American Rescue Plan funds to ensure that this program can thrive and grow. So, you know, we've all been on the streets. We've all seen people waving their hands in the air and screaming at the world. You know, that kind of crazy is usually drug-fired. Uh, sometimes it's just mental infirmities, but. What do you do with a person who's acting out on drugs on the street? Take them to jail? It's not the right response. Take them to the emergency room? It's not the right response. Take them to the Sure Center and it is the right response. So what this is, and that is an answer to the what question, which is. Meet the need with a service that actually addresses the need. Dealing with substance abuse is a big, big problem, and, uh, I'm very proud of all the people involved with the Sure Center. I would like to say that one of our repeat guests who had been to the Sure Center. Happens to be the individual who perished in Cagis District on the night of the big storm. Um, unfortunately, she succumbed to her addiction. So. You know, we have a lot of successes, but we do lose people, and as Bob Earland Bush has very notably put out. About two homeless individuals die per week. Uh, it's not really so much, I think, about, about, uh, exposure to the elements as about. You know, physical infirmities, terminal illness, substance abuse, but none of that has helped by being outdoors. That's, that's for sure. Okay, um, the next slide, please. So our proposed options. What, what can District Three do to add to the mix? Well, we can expand capacity at the North Fifth Shelter that is currently run by Shelter Inc. Uh, there are potentially, uh, another hundred and four to a hundred and twenty beds that we can put in play there. There is a public agency-owned lot at Rosson Court at the north of North Gate that is actually an ideal spot to do tent or car camping, safe ground. I would like to point out to all my constituents that, as noted before, my district is bisected by the river. I am not looking to move. Homeless individuals from the south to the north or the north to the south. If I put into place a, a safe ground, it would be to alleviate the impacts of homelessness. And to serve the homeless population in that immediate area. I, I believe firmly in that, that, you know, people are largely wary of any kind of homeless program near them. Uh, this one is relatively isolated, certainly very isolated from homes, and, uh, I think it's a great site. Bridget has confirmed that it's a good one. We looked at everything in our district. We looked at SMUD, we asked at CSUS, the Mayflower Site on Alhambra. There is a potential spot on Lynette, but I have not, uh, managed to reach the, the owner of that privately-owned property. Uh, the New York Bagel Boys on Folsom Boulevard also held privately. Thus far, uh, the, the responses have been negative, but we will, um, keep looking. Anyway, next slide, please. So this is, this is the big deal for me. All roads lead to Mecca and my Mecca is Cal Expo. And I said this at all of our community outreach meetings. As noted before, and you can see in this graphic at Lot P, that is the Ethan Way Shelter that was approved by the council and didn't come to fruition. Lot Z is a tremendous opportunity site as well as Lot A and the areas around Lot A. So is this a pipe dream? Well, I don't think it is. Thank you, Mayor, very much for setting up a meeting with Cal Expo and board members tomorrow. We've already met with supervisors. Look, here's the bottom line, and, and this has been acknowledged many times, that if we do not attack homelessness in collaboration with the county of Sacramento. We are not going to get to the win that we need to get to. This project could really exemplify that collaboration and that win. We've been talking to supervisors. Uh, this has great potential. Would it mean the end of the State Fair? I don't think so. I think it could collaborate very well with the State Fair and even enhance it. Uh, but those are hard arguments to make, but we're on that path. The vision here that Bridget and I have been talking about is the Haven for Hope Model, the Courtyard Campus Model. With Cal Expo being the courtyard to stabilize people, get them in a safe area. Get them stabilized, start to apply services, and for those who are ready to move them to a campus for more intensive care. And, and that could potentially be the Voice Ranch out by I O and owned, owned and operated by the county. So we are in talks. About that kind of collaboration, and that gives me great hope. I, I want to express my deep thanks to new supervisor, Rich Desmond, who is bringing a fresh set of eyes to the county. And then again to Anne Edwards, because she understands all these issues very well. Potentially, uh, not immediately, but potentially we could get to perhaps five hundred people in these various locations at Cal Expo. We'd probably start off at a lower number. The idea would be very similar to Haven for Hope, to every year serve five hundred people and get. To every year, serve 500 people and get them into the campus model, and do something there similar to the Mather Community Campus, which was created and run by the Volunteers of America. It was a very successful program, where they could take a drug addict off the street, rehab them, educate them, give them community, teach them about financial issues, deal with their legal issues, work out problems with family, eventually give them job training, all the way to job placement. VOA did amazing work at Mather Community Campus, and it's my hope that the county will deem to re-energize the Mather Campus site, because it, like Cal Expo, is a tremendous opportunity site. To me, this kind of idea gives me hope. I haven't had this much hope about making real serious inroads into the homeless conundrum for a long time. We need to move the camps that are on the streets. We need to mitigate the impacts of wanton camping on the streets, and in so doing, meet the needs of the unhoused population. Some will accept our help willingly, some will not, we know this. The good news is that we have tremendous staff in Bridget and Danielle, Michelle and the SHRA team. We know what the solutions for homelessness are, we know how to creatively apply them. The bottom line is this, we have to reignite that spark in people where they want to take control of their own lives. And if we are there at that moment where they're ready, we will have tremendous successes. As we're shown in Katie's presentation and mine as well, we have a lot of wins. We have 2,700 people last year. You know, our good work often goes unnoticed, because what's visual on the streets is pretty bad. And I've already alluded to why it's so bad. But we know how to do this, and I believe we can, because we have money, we have collaboration with the county, we have the will to do this. We have the impetus from the mayor, and we've got all the council members putting their shoulder to the boulder to try to move this very intrinsic, 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 intrinsic problem. I mean, it's a tough boulder to move. So, you know, I look forward to working with Hope Sacramento to achieve their vision for this kind of program. Again, this gets to the what and how to apply services and when. You know, as soon as possible. As I said, this isn't a pipe dream at this point. We're in discussions about how to make this work and finding the county to be a much more willing partner these days, which is truly reason for hope. So I'll finish up with the last slide here, Mindy. You know, a lot of talk has been about numbers, numbers of beds, amount of housing. So I'll run through a few numbers. We currently have the potential for 602 shelter beds existing in District 3. We're only using 366 currently. If we expand all the potential, we could get 236 more in areas where we already have the beds available. Our Housing Choice vouchers, again, 1,085. Those are ongoing, so those don't really add to the mix. Our motel voucher program is much more active in D3 than I realized. We have 300 beds that are currently being utilized by our very able staff. Thank you for that, Bridget. Affordable units planned, as I said, 780 units in D3. Mirasol Village, Northview Accelerate, Fong Ranch Road Surplus Property, the Wong Family Center, Joshua's House, potentially 15 spaces, car camping sites, 200 potential. I would say 100 actual could happen pretty quickly. And Cal Expo, again, the promised land for dealing with homelessness in District 3, but I think for the city too. If we can create this kind of Haven for Hope model, we will have a pipeline to get people who are ready to take control of their lives. We will be able to facilitate that. I really hope that we can get there. I hope that my colleagues will support me in this. So, bottom line is, we've done a lot in D3. We're willing to do a lot more. We have the staff, the knowledge, the money, the will, changes, collaboration. We can do this, so let's get busy. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilman Harris. Very comprehensive presentation, appreciate it very much. Let's, do we have public testimony, Madam Clerk? We do have one caller, and then let's have some conversation among the city council.
Thank you, may I have my caller, please? Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. One, I appreciate how difficult, I am, my name is Stephanie, I'm from District 3. I appreciate everybody's time in trying to resolve this issue. I have seen it grow in the 20 years I've been here. My questions revolve around, thank you for the presentation, thank you for acknowledging that drugs are a part of this. Drugs do seem to be a problem among the homeless. To that end, if an individual, will housing resolve that issue? Is housing going to resolve the issue that there may still be individuals who have a drug condition that will then refuse the housing, or will go into housing with that condition? Also, will there be compliance required to go into these housing units, such as drug-free? Keeping them clean, as we've seen in other areas, there have been some issues with needles and drugs and feces, et cetera. And if there is not any compliance requirement, is there a plan in place to regularly clean those facilities? Also, if there is no requirement that individuals do accept the housing, and the housing is available to them, per the Ninth Circuit Court ruling, would that mean that the city of Sacramento could enforce the camping ordinance violation because the housing was available, but it was declined? And then finally, we, I have seen and heard that in other areas where more money is spent and more services are available, where does get out and more individuals then come to that area. I'm not trying to be insensitive, but it's happened on my street when we ask people where they're coming from. As we continue to spend and provide these resources, is there a plan in place to see if we can contain that to individuals who are local to our area? Or it seems like the problem will...
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete, will you make your final comment, please?
That is my final comment, thank you for all your time and attention.
Thank you for your comments. I have no more callers, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much to the caller, and thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, council members, let's have a discussion here. I know I have some comments, I will, I always like to, most of the time, I like to see if my colleagues want to go first. Who would like to comment?
Councilmember Valenzuela, then Councilmember Getta.
Okay, Councilmember Valenzuela, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks, Councilmember Harris, for your work on this plan, very thorough review of all that's happened, and which is really helpful for us new kids who are still getting up to speed with the historic actions. And I'm excited about these sites, especially Joshua's House. I think that's, I mean, it's heartbreaking when anybody dies on the streets, but I think especially for folks that are suffering from long-term illness, it makes a lot of sense that we have a place for them to go and die with dignity and comfort. And so that seems really, really exciting. I had a couple of specific questions that have come up from my constituents that I hope are okay, because we border in a lot of areas, right? I mean, Sure Center is one of those areas that's in my district that we've been working together on. And I think Sutter's Landing has come up to me a few times, since a lot of folks are parking over there during the evenings under the solar panel arrays, and I wonder if that's a site that potentially was on your radar for potential just support and services, since there's so many over there. And then I was also wondering about the Fong Ranch property, which, you know, since I brought up when we surplus it a few weeks ago, since it will take some time for that to get developed into whatever hopeful affordable housing we're hoping for at that site, is there any potential for that to become like a safe ground? Or any of your sites kind of looking to be safe grounds more urgently, I guess, is my follow-up question. So, that's a, that's a great job, though, Councilmember, thank you for your work on this.
Yeah, sure, Katie. So, you know, as far as park areas go, I am not a proponent of ceding our parks to homeless populations. I feel that we can find other safe ground areas and keep our park use intact. That's my feeling. I would say this, you know, that much of the open space in Sutter's Landing Park is, of course, off-gassing, because it's a former landfill, and would not be suitable for camping habitation. I would prefer not to do car camping in Sutter's Landing Park, I just don't think it's an appropriate use. As far as Fong Ranch goes, yes, we could definitely consider that. It does have access issues, and, you know, it's unimproved. So it has limited use, but I will consult with Bridget Dean about that. You know, from, Katie, from my point of view, a lot of those decisions about the practicality of where and how to do safe ground should be staff-driven. We can certainly provide the possibilities, but, you know, the people who are have to, who are going to have to run the programs should have a very strong voice in what we try to implement. Like I said, assuming we can get Cal Expo in play, that's a lot of spaces, and that would take a lot of pressure off, you know, and it would be a citywide program. It would be a pretty darn energetic thing. You know, overall, if you add up the numbers of what I presented, they're very substantial. Very substantial indeed, in terms of housing possibilities, as well as shelter possibilities, transitional possibilities, and I think more permanent outcomes. So those are the issues, you know, that I see in my district. And I think that we can implement most of them. You know, it's easy to point to possibilities, but I wanted to keep it to areas that we could actually implement and get immediate impact. Obviously, Cal Expo is going to be a bit of a lift, but I believe we can get there. And hopefully, not too far in the future. So if that happens, then we're going to be all hands on deck out there.
I appreciate that, Councilmember Harris. And I think, yeah, to the point that Bridget identifies additional safe ground sites. I mean, you know, my interest in just trying to move people somewhere quickly, since we've got some really emergent situations, as you know well in your district, and would love to help out with that however we can if Bridget comes across a site that she thinks is a good potential in your district, then I just want to offer that, thanks.
Katie, you know, we worked together on the 29th Street issue. I wanted to get people into a safe condition as quickly as possible as well. You know, again, you know, I've got this big problem on Commerce Circle, and it's becoming a very big problem. I would like to move that, that particular encampment to Cal Expo with great expediteness, quickly, you know. Like every council member, I have urgent needs. And again, it's twofold, you know, it's about meeting the needs of the homeless, but also meeting the needs of the house, you know. But we have to move forward on these things with intent. You know, there were unintended consequences to the overnight respite shelter. You know, some people got infected with COVID, and then we had the fire at the City Hall garage. I don't want to move too quickly and have unintended consequences. I want to do this with our staff, well-thought-out programs, with the right providers, and get it right the first time. I think that you've done that with your safe ground at, you know, Miller Park and at Six and W. And that's the way I would like to proceed.
Yeah, and that's really how our office solved that 29th Street encampment problem, right? Working with Bridget and with service providers to do outreach and to have a place for folks to go. Because that's the thing, is you can't just say, can't be here, as you know. You've got to have a spot for folks to go that's going to meet their needs. And that took a ton of work, and Bridget and her team did a Herculean effort to work with those residents at that encampment, with our office, to make sure that those folks had a place to go when they needed to move to accommodate the improvements needed at that site. But I do think, yeah, it's a balance, right? Like, we want the long-term stuff to stick, and I think the urgency for me, some of the emails I've been answering just today from folks that are like, just get these camps out of here, right? As locals want to just get the camps out of here. And I say, well, you can't, if you just tell someone to move, they're just going to move into another business district, right? Or to another neighborhood, because they're people, and they don't go away. And so I think to the degree to which we can work with Bridget to identify those safe ground sites so that we can build on the model that we really created and the work in District 4, I would love to partner with you on that. So, thank you, Councilmember.
You know, one last comment, Katie. As we develop more of these spaces, as you call them, and possibilities, we really need to test the Martin B. Boise decision. You know, we need to say to campers that we have a space treaty, and we really encourage you to take it, because we're creating pathway. But if you don't, you do have to move. You know, the impacts of homelessness cannot be ignored. And, you know, I think that we should move in that direction as quickly as possible. Because, look, we represent the whole city, not just the unhoused population, but the housed population as well. And we have to meet both of their needs. I think we can.
Thank you. Councilmember Getta.
Thank you very much. First, thank you very much to your staff, Councilmember Harris, and to Lisa and Steve for their consistent and continued work. Great to see all of the successes coming out of those programs. And most recently, thank you to Steve Waters for helping us start up a warming center in South Sacramento. Councilmember Harris, I also would love to work with you on this. We share both sides, you share the western side of the American River, and I've got both sides of the American River on the eastern side of the city district. And, you know, my council district goes all the way to the county area where you can walk to Cal Expo as well on the northern part of the American River. So I think to your point that we have to be figuring out how we work together on these, because all of these issues impact our districts, and the political lines really, really don't matter much when it comes to addressing this issue. The, so one, I also wanted to say, I think, you know, some of the solutions you put forward there would work well in some of the vacant areas, in large vacant areas that we have in my council district. I'm sure there's other council districts that have very large vacant areas, where we could look at some of those concepts, particularly the ones that Steve Waters had brought up there. And the only thing I was going to say is, one, I think 100% you're right on looking at how we use Cal Expo as a great spot, because from that, we can build off of other locations and learn from that. Finally, I'll just say, you know, you deserve a lot of credit, and I don't think sometimes you get as much credit as you deserve, because I remember you and I first went to Seattle to look at different models. And then I think, I think, we went independently to Portland to look at what their challenges were and learning from those, so we don't repeat those mistakes as well. And you even went down to Modesto, so I think you've been pioneering this. And then with the Railroad Avenue Shelter, yes, we keep learning from those to make better strides, and we still have a long way to go, but I think that, to that effect, I think you deserve a lot of credit in that as well, moving that forward. So, again, I think this is great work. I'm looking forward to working with you on some of our areas where we could use some of your sanitation facilities. That was a smart move in your forward thinking to get those facilities for wherever in the city we may need them. And then finally, again, this is a good piece for you, Mr. Mayor, that I think the idea of a citywide master plan and piecing all of these together to create a coherent system that has different tools and resources, not just safe grounds, but master campus locations, all plugging together are good. And with that, I think it's great work, and look forward to working with you as your neighbor adjacent here on the American River.
Thank you, Eric. You know, I'm keenly aware of the problems on our borders, you know. Right by A&amp;A, under the freeway, big problem. I'm very pleased to work with you on any of these solutions as well. You know, as you said, the borders don't make any difference. This is a citywide effort, it's a citywide issue. I'm glad, thank you, Mayor, again, for engaging every council member and kind of lighting the fire under us all, to be extremely energetic about this. But, you know, I am a firm believer that, yes, we can do emergent safe grounds, but if we don't have a place to graduate people to, or the services to actually meet their needs, it's, you know, it's temporary respite, that has value, but not in the long haul. And, you know, I've been doing this long enough to really be thinking the long term and the really big successes, like VOA had at Mather Community Campus. at Mayfair Community Campus. That's the kind of program we really, really need.
Thank you. Very good discussion. Let me turn it over to Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Harris, I just want to thank you for the presentation that you made today. You started off with a historical viewpoint of what has happened in the past that's leading up to where we are today. And for our new council members, I think that's very important. For us older council members, it's equally as important because sometimes we take it for granted, the work that we've already done. You've always been the trailblazer on the council, in my opinion, willing to take risks and willing to make sure that our unhoused population has resources available to them in your district as evidenced by the program that you've had already. And I just want to give a shout out to your staff, not only to your staff, your personal staff that works with you every single day, that makes you as great as you are. I want to give a shout out also to the Bridget Deans and the Daniels and the LaChelles and all those other people who are making you great at this moment. Because without them, we would not be quite what we are. And I know you agree with that as well. You are working exceptionally well with your community partners, evidenced by those that you had speak. And I know there are many more that you are working with. You also have proven to me that you're an extremely good and competent advocate for our unhoused population. You have come up with some of the most creative ideas in the time that I've known you of anybody on the council. And so when you're talking about Joshua's House, when you're talking about the Sure Program, when you're talking about the Cal Expo opportunity, all the different trips that you've made, whether it be to Seattle, to Portland, to Modesto, and I'm sure there are many more that didn't get called out. But, you know, you have been an advocate and you have been a leader in this effort. And so I just want to acknowledge you for that. And I just love your creativity and your thinking out of the box, you know, just really thinking. And it's very, it's definite to me that you have a plan and you know exactly where it is that you're trying to get to. And it's not just to house the homeless, but it's to house them with services that will get them out of homelessness. So I like your passion. I like your plan and I like your purpose. And I just want to let you know you did a great job today and keep doing what you're doing.
Rick, thank you. Thank you so much for that love. I'll tell you what, I really appreciate it. And you're right, our staff at this juncture is absolutely first cabin. That again, is a real reason for hope. We're well poised to make real strides here. Anyway, I appreciate your comments very much.
And the thing I forgot to say was, the county and city collaboration that you're working hard, that you've already accomplished and you're working harder to even expand is something that's very important. So that was another part of what I wanted to say that I didn't say. And I just want to acknowledge you for your work on making that happen. It's going to benefit all of us in the city as you continue to do what you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you. So a couple of comments. And this is not a statement about anybody's chronological age, but what I like here, I mean, it's sort of represented in the discussion here today, is that we do have members who, like Jeff Harris, who have been working very hard on this issue for a long time and always leaning in, right? And never kind of afraid of the inevitable struggle and backlash. But it's now combined with a lot of new energy. And I could say that of all the members that came back and now the new members, I think we now have a real winning combination, combined with the circumstances that we face, the new resources that are coming. And yes, this idea of going at the sighting question all at one time. And we cannot lose the moment. That's really the point here. And in some ways, I will say, that this part of the process where the council members are meeting with the community and then making very thoughtful presentations may be the easiest part. Because next, we're going to get to how we actually put the map together. And we are going to get input from the community. And we are going to get input from some of our staff here. And that's when a lot of the hard choices are going to have to be made. And how do we define fair share and equity, right? I think about the beginning of Councilmember Harris's presentation where he rightfully points out what the River District is doing with regard to homelessness. And yet, when we, this master plan is about adding capacity and adding significant capacity, and how do we make sure that that is done throughout our entire city, including the district? Jeff, I appreciate, you know, and the running joke now with me among members is, well, what are the numbers? Well, the numbers have the potential to be pretty good here. I mean, potentially 200 on the safe ground site, the Joshua's House, which is something we must make happen and follow through. Marlene is a, is a great human being and that legacy for her, but also for our unsheltered peep, folks who are dying is the very least we can do. And then you talk about adding the shelter capacity at Fifth Street. And you have a number of potential sites out there that you say, initial response not necessarily positive, but we never take no for an answer. And the first no isn't, isn't always the last word. And of course, you'd have your city team, including me, behind trying to do more rather than less. And then there's the Cal Expo question. And I have always been a proponent of what you're describing. The, and the opportunities here, not to do it in the right way, to address the concerns of the business community, and actually to focus on the very real problem of homelessness in and around the Cal Expo area and that part of town. And so I look forward to those conversations with the Cal Expo leadership directly. We don't need to go do some end around here. We're going to talk to them about it. It's a huge amount of land. I think you've done your homework. Others have done their homework in terms of the potential opportunity sites here in a way that would not affect the State Fair or any other important objectives that Cal Expo has. And we just have to enter into good faith conversations with them and continue to make our case. The governor today came out with a $12 billion plan to combat homelessness in the May revision. The Senate and the Assembly have each come forward with even more money. And there's differences between the plans and they'll be negotiated and the big city mayors will weigh in on all of that. But the governor and the entire state of California have identified homelessness as a major priority, which includes maximizing the utility of appropriate state assets to help cities and counties deal with this very serious problem. And so, you know, you put forward the potential of 820, 835, you know, 835 or so additional beds. I think that's a really solid start and a foundation here. And really appreciate your thoughtfulness and your good work. All right?
Mayor, can I just make one comment?
You get the last word. You get the last word.
Thank you. It's about the business community in Cal Expo. You know, I've talked to Rich Desmond about this for many hours. And the business community are also our constituents and we have to meet their needs. The impacts of homelessness have been very difficult for a lot of businesses everywhere in the city. But, you know, my answer to the business community is that we're not doing this to you, we're doing it for you. Everybody wins. Everybody wins if we can pull this off. If we can put Cal Expo in play and solve the needs of that many hundreds of people, you know, the business community will win as well. And I look forward to our discussions with Cal Expo because I think we can present the case that we can be actually beneficial to the State Fair moving forward. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. It's very cathartic, to tell you the truth.
Well, very good. We will send a bill. Excellent. Okay, we have a couple more of these presentations. And I say then, not that this hasn't been hard work, because it has been, but then I think we grapple with a lot of choices and a lot of opportunities. And the one thing we will not and cannot settle for is something other than maximizing capacity to help people from where they are at, unsheltered, unsafe, and unhealthy, into better living circumstances on the path towards ending their homelessness. That is going to continue to be the North Star. All right, let us move now to item four. Is it item four? That's what I meant. Item two, the settlement agreement. Who is presenting on this one?
Mayor, this is Leslie Walker. I am from the City Attorney's Office.
Welcome.
Thank you. So before you this afternoon is an agreement settling the lawsuit filed by SAC IWD, or Sacramento Investment Without Displacement, against the UC Regents, challenging the UC Regents' approval of the Aggie Square Project. And first, I want to give you a little context and then we'll get into some of the terms of the actual settlement agreement. So UC Regents approved the Aggie Square Project in November 2020. And then Sacramento Investment Without Displacement filed a lawsuit challenging that approval the following month in December of 2020. Because the project is important to the city over the last several months, we have taken, the city has taken a number of actions to implement the project, including approving the enhanced, or initiating the formation of the Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District and approving the Community Benefit Partnership Agreement between the developer, the UC, and the city. We've also worked more recently on developing a term sheet, setting forth the commitments of UC, the city, and SAC IWD, which would result in the settlement of the lawsuit that SAC IWD filed against the UC Regents. And so before you this afternoon is an actual settlement agreement based on the terms that were identified in that approved term sheet. So the settlement agreement generally, generally does two things. It gives SAC IWD a role in the implementation of the Community Benefit Partnership Agreement, or CBPA. And it also commits the city to working with SAC IWD on a few initiatives going forward, not so closely related to the Aggie Square Project. So very broadly, with respect to the Community Benefit Partnership Agreement, the city commits to three things. Working with SAC IWD and the community to address any deficiencies in the implementation of the Community Benefit Partnership Agreement. SAC IWD representatives will sit on various working groups created to implement the CBPA. And the city will also participate in community forums each year to report on the implementation of the CBPA. With respect to future initiatives, the agreement commits the city and SAC IWD to working together on three things. First, developing an ordinance requiring community benefit agreements for certain projects going forward. Developing a local business protection and development program. And also the formation of a second EIFD with, and identifying transportation priorities in the Stockton Boulevard area. Under the agreement, SAC IWD is committed to expressing support for the project, dismissing the lawsuit, and then also agreeing not to challenge implementing approvals for the project with some narrow exceptions set forth in the agreement. And although Regents, the UC Regents are a party to the agreement, the, the sort of only thing that they are required to do is to pay SAC IWD's attorney's fees accumulated to date in the lawsuit. With that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay. Well, first of all, I want to thank you, Leslie, for really Herculean work. This is not easy. Number one, there were multiple parties to this. And let's just say that there was very detailed discussion about maybe every sentence or every other word. And you really stuck with it. And so I want to thank you and Susanna for helping us through this very, very important chapter in the city. And of course, to Jay and Eric, who continue to pour the thank you and the credit towards. You both have been steadfast in leading and representing your districts and your communities. And the work product is, shows here in terms of what it is we all achieved here together. So let me turn it over to the two of you for any comments. And then I think we can take a pretty quick vote. And of course, S IWD, I don't want to leave them out. The community spoke, the community pushed, and the community delivered. And we delivered with and for the community. And so it's exactly the model of what we intend to do going forward when it comes to economic development in this city. And let it be a model, not only here, but elsewhere. Jay and Eric?
Mayor, do we have any public comment on this item?
Do not.
Yeah, we have no callers on this item.
I don't have any questions here, but I think Councilmember Valenzuela punched up.
Oh, go. Councilmember Valenzuela, were you first? Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. I don't want to steal the thunder of my colleagues. I just had a quick question about the Community Benefits Agreement ordinance listed in this and like what the timeline would look like for us to see that come back potentially for consideration.
As soon as possible. I mean, I think we're going to get right to work on a citywide ordinance and put forward a draft with, in collaboration with S IWD and other community leaders as quickly as possible. I don't know the exact timeline, but it's going to follow up.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay. Jay and Eric?
I'll go real, yeah, really quickly. I mean, a lot of work went into this. We had a lot of discussion when we, when we did the Community Benefits Partnership Agreement and the EIFD at council. Kind of leave it at that. This is a huge project, which will be a win-win from the neighborhood because of all the work that went into this, both from the city and its partners. The developer, Wexford, has been great on this, as has UC Davis. And to the members of S IWD, all of the individual organizations who do a great job representing their communities. So I'm excited that we're going to move forward on this. I know there's one more lawsuits out there that that needs to get settled. But again, 5,000 construction jobs, 3,500 to 4,000 ongoing jobs, $50 million affordable housing fund that we put, hopefully we'll put $10 million into Mercy Housing Project on our next item here. And with that, I'd like to move approval of the item and thank Leslie Walker for all her work.
Thank you.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor. And only to say that the settlement agreement, which they've been working on until, until recently, the final details, has given us a roadmap to ensure that we have a consistent community outreach process and engagement regardless of who's on the council. And, and we also know that the nonprofit organizations go through transitions too, but it creates a formalized process so that as they also make transitions, that the community consistently has a seat at the table and are engaged as well. And with that, I think it was a good step forward on how, as we look at further development in the area down Stockton Boulevard, it's all done from a community perspective. So glad to support it and second the item.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, let's call the roll on the item, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Ashby. Councilmember Laloie.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Vice Commissioner.
Aye.
Councilmember Gueda.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. Nine, nothing. And Councilmember Vice Commissioner is correct, there is one more lawsuit. Got to endeavor to settle that. And on we go. Excellent. Let's now move to the next item, please, which is the Stockton Boulevard Affordable Housing Development, which is related to the item we just passed. Go ahead. Housing Development, which is related to the item we just passed. Go ahead. Ms. Dozier?
Good afternoon, council. We have before you consideration for a housing project that we're very excited about on Stockton Boulevard. Stockton Boulevard, we have a very long history. The agency has done work there for many, many years, starting back to really one of the first motel conversions. So it's very interesting now that the state has realized what the council did back in 2008, you know, the moving forward and looking at these motels and doing conversions. In addition to that, we also did work on Stockton Boulevard with one of the older motels there, the San Juan site, which is another opportunity site that we're continuing to collaborate and work with. The county, Councilmember Gera has done a lot of legislative work that's helped us with that particular site. But today, we have consideration for 4995 Stockton Boulevard and I have Christine Wyker here to give the presentation on that.
Good afternoon, Christine Wyker with SHRA. The report before you recommends approval of a $15 million loan commitment to Mercy Housing for construction of the 4995 Stockton Boulevard Affordable Housing Development. A multifamily workforce housing project will be located on a 7.8 acre site and the 200 unit development includes one, two and three bedroom units with affordability restrictions between 30 and 70% of area median income. The construction costs reflect the varied architectural design styles of a four-story building with offices and community space on the ground floor, nine three-story buildings and 13 two-story buildings. Development also includes demolishing the 4,400,000 square foot building that was once the John's Furniture location. Given the former uses of a dry cleaner, gas station and car wash on this site, approximately $2 million towards the environmental cleanup and demolition is reflected in the total development costs. Amenities include a community room, commuter lab, parks and two playgrounds and Mercy Housing is not only a developer, but a property manager and resident service provider. The $15 million SHRA loan is comprised of $10 million from the city's newly created housing fund, which is comprised of city general funds and measure you funds, $4 million of housing trust funds and $1 million of mixed income housing funds. Other financing includes low income housing tax credits, state tax credits, SAKA's debt bonds, loans, deferred developer fee, general partnership fees and fee waivers. Entitlements for this project are approved and the project will be able to apply for tax credits by the end of May and if approved, construction is anticipated to begin early next year. In closing, staffs recommending approval of the financing for 4995 Stockton and staffs available to answer any questions we have.
All right. This is very exciting. I mean, this is the first project that is, we are considering for funding under our general fund, Housing Trust Fund. Let me turn it over to Councilmember Geta.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say this is very exciting for a lot of the community who has, has lived around that vacant land and that empty building of the old John's Furniture. Many people remember in the community, John's Furniture is their place where they would buy their, the, all of their stuff for their homes and unfortunately that property seen better days. It's become a strip mall. It was, it was a strip mall that they demolished and an old car wash facility and a vacant building that caught fire at some point. The, the property was littered with, with trash and, and what's exciting to see now is that this is part of the resurgence of, of revitalizing a commercial corridor like Stockton Boulevard. The fact that this project can do over 200 units of affordable housing, but also a significant portion to extremely low income, which will allow those that are formerly unhoused to also go in there, given the fact that we have many people on Stockton Boulevard who need housing as well. So it's a great project because it also brings in a park in near a community like Talik Village that doesn't have a park in there. So it's a great way to blend everyone there. The fact that we're, the, our staff, thank you very much, all our staff for working on this quickly to try to meet this deadline to capture some of that state funding. This morning, we were joined by members of SWID about this commitment. It goes hand in hand with our commitment with the Aggie Square project and ensuring that we're delivering on the promise of building more housing in the area to address our workforce needs and our current needs too. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm excited to move this project. It's 220 plus units on Stockton Boulevard in a great leaded area and it's a good example for us and other commercial corridors throughout our city and our region. With that, proud to move the project and thank you to all our staff.
I do have Councilmember Valenzuela and Vice Mayor Shenier up in the queue.
Thanks, Mayor. And very exciting project. I think it's also doing some land rehab and some other things that are just good for communities. And so this is a really great project. And my question comes more to the broader Affordable Housing Trust Fund and how we're administering it because I recall getting a briefing from staff after that was approved in the mid-year about just guidelines and strategy and priorities for the funding and just wondering where that's at. I'm not sure if Danielle or LaChelle or whoever would like to respond to that, but just curious what the sort of North Star is for spending. 31 million is not a ton of money in housing terms as we can see right at the back of this one project. It's going to spend a good chunk of it. So I'm just curious if there's any update on those larger principles.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, please.
So given the deadline and the timeframe to move forward very quickly, we were bringing Stockton Boulevard, this particular project forward and then coming back to the council to having the bigger discussion about the housing fund to talk exactly about what you're referencing in terms of what are the other projects, what is the process that we'll go through to take a look at those.
Okay, so that's coming up in, in the near future. Okay, awesome. Thank you, LaChelle. Appreciate that. Oh, and I'm happy to second the item. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Vice Mayor Shenier?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to say ditto to, to what, what Councilmember Gera said. This very much is in step with the S I W D agreement that we just voted unanimously on. We talk a lot about trying to build trust in our communities and I think this is a really important step, coming so quickly after the agreements on Aggie Square, when we talked about putting together a $50 million housing fund, taking this step so soon to say, this is what we talked about. And knowing that displacement of individuals in the community is one of the main reasons that S I W D got involved, one of those main challenges that we will have clearly. We are putting together funds for rental assistance, mortgage assistance, you know, renovation assistance. But even with all that, ultimately, as we talked about on the homeless situation, which Mr. Harris talked about, we have to have affordable and permanent housing if we're going to be successful in the long run. So that's, that's what this does. It's, it's a down payment on the other 99 vacant lots, I think in, on Stockton Boulevard that we've got to get after. But with a mix of affordable workforce and market rate housing, we can really set the example for how do we bring a renaissance to an urban corridor. So I'm, I'm excited to vote aye on this. Again, a great start for the community and I want to thank Mercy, Stephen Dawes, for all the work that they've done to get us to this point, as well as SHRA to be ready to go as kind of a shovel-ready project, if we want to, can call it that, and get it up and going over 200 units in a desperately needed area of our city.
Great. And the only final comment I want to make, Councilmember Valenzuela's question about priority is very, very important and also mentioning that $31 million is not enough to accommodate all the needs. And I will just repeat what I say most weeks, which is that if affordable housing is our city priority, and I believe that it is, then we need to find ways to put more discretionary resources into our Affordable Housing Trust Fund. That's what it's going to take. And, and we're going to have new opportunities as we move forward here with federal and state funds and it doesn't have to be all general fund dollars. I understand that, but we have to keep the focus on building that from 31 million to something that at least adds up to three figures as opposed to two figures. Because...
Mayor, may I say something before we take the vote?
Yes, of course.
Well, I just wanted to say this is a great project, great job, Councilmember Gera, and thank you to SHRA for helping him pull together something that's for families, that's in an important part of the city, that's targeting, helping the Aggie Square come along. It's, it's good and I, I think it meets a lot of the criteria we're trying to accomplish and has other benefits as well, the workforce piece and all that. However, and I'm going to vote yes, of course, it's a great project. But I just want to echo Councilmember Valenzuela's comments because I think we all agree that housing is a top priority, but it's inside of those parameters where I think she's asking and I would ask for myself too, for an opportunity for some debate moving forward. This one, yes, but I, this falls actually into the category of things that I also want to make a top priority, which is families. But if we're going to open a family shelter or we're going to spend, we've, we've heard so many proposals from our colleagues, there's still some to come. And I just want to make sure that we don't take votes that spend the resource that we have before we have a chance to consider all of the things in front of us. That being said, even if they were all in front of us, I'm still convinced that family housing on Stockton Boulevard right by Aggie Square is the right thing to do. So we should vote yes on this. But moving forward, I'd like to have a more robust dialogue around all the proposals, Mayor. And I know that there are community members that would like to weigh in after they've heard from everyone. And, and I just want to make sure that in your timeline, Mayor, that there is some, some set aside day for us to do that before we take a vote.
Yeah. I think that's right. I do think that's right, although we just have to be nimble and flexible here because some of these projects are driven by particular timelines and deadlines. And so that's kind of the trick here is that we don't want to miss the window for something that might have a great chance of getting funded and built. But you're right. I, I know that we are working actually on a, on a policy paper and I do think we need to get that to, to the city council, Mr. City Manager and, and Director Dozier, so that the council can weigh in on the larger scale priorities. We did this, by the way, back two years ago, when we were first talking about a housing trust fund and did approve a policy document. But I think it is time now to update it in light of, well, new members and also new sources of funding and new circumstances. So we will do that.
Yeah, that's right. That's right, Mayor. Thank you. That's exactly what I meant. For this one's obviously a no-brainer, but I do think a policy statement from two years ago is probably far outdated since there's three new members and all of that. But yes, I, and, and Mayor, just to reiterate, that there would be a chance you're thinking when that's presented for the community to participate as well, right?
Well, of course, of course. I, I will just preview that in, in my council ideas and questions, I may talk about another project that has a very specific timeline and objective. But I, I hear exactly what it is you're saying and agree. We, we got to get the policy formulation in front of us so that as we go forward, we can then compare the project that, that is before the council with the priorities laid out by the city council.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
That's right. Okay, I have Councilmember Geta.
Yeah, I just wanted to last, thank again LaChelle, Dozier, our city staff and, and Stephen Dawes and the Mercy Housing team because for many of us who remember, back then I was on the Neighborhood Association Board, we were reminiscing the, the experience, what, what a different experience it was when we were doing the Boulevard Court Project, the motel conversion. And there was, there was a lot of controversy. There were a lot of neighbors who were opposed to any type of affordable housing, not just permanent supportive housing, but any type of affordable housing in that area. And this, this one has been, you know, so smooth and moving forward. And I think all of us have learned that, I think the settlement agreement, the community engagement, all the process that's been done by staff, even Liz Boyd and, and all of the economic development team have been talking about this, it's really developed that sense of community ownership. So just to say thank you again, because it was a, we were reminiscing, you know, Christine Wyker and LaChelle Dozier yesterday about that experience. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm ready to vote and I'm excited about this project that could open as close as in two years.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg will be back in just one moment.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Sorry for the delay. Okay, that passes nine to nothing. We now move to the final item of the day, which is the middle income housing proposal. Again, I would turn it over to Director Dozier.
We have Christine Wyker, who is going to give the presentation on this opportunity that has been presented to the city of Sacramento to increase the amount of middle income housing.
Afternoon again. SHRA was directed to review a proposal for the joint, a joint powers agreement with Californian Municipal Finance Agency, or CMFA, to create a missing middle income housing program. This program provides, or this report provides an overview, an analysis of the program, and staff is looking for direction from the council on how to proceed. Modern income housing programs have been developed and marketed by three entities, CMFA, California Community Housing Agency and California Statewide Community Development Authority. The basic mechanisms for these programs involves the city becoming a non-voting member of the JPA. The JPA structure allows for the issuance of tax-exempt public purpose bonds. These bonds are used to purchase multifamily properties and because they are government-owned, they are not subject to property taxes. This program is designed to serve households from 80% of area median income or AMI to 120% AMI. The affordability period is between 15 to 30 years based on when the property is sold. At year 15, the city has the right of first refusal to purchase the property with the amount of debt on it. If bondholders clerk close on the property, this right is lost. If the city decides to exercise the option by year, does not, sorry, does not decide to exercise the option to purchase by year 30, the JPA must sell the properties, pay off the existing debt and distribute any net sales procedure remaining to taxing entities. It should be noted, noted that this is a new program. There is no government oversight. Without regulations, the amount or the mechanism of how the taxing entities will reimburse is unknown. CMFA was created in 2004 to promote economic development and community development throughout California. CMFA has proposed to form a JPA with the city of Sacramento to acquire two recently destructive buildings, H16, which is located at 731 16th Street, and Eleanor Apartments, which is located at 501 16th Street. Each building has 95 units consisting of studios, one and two bedroom units. The bonds issued by the JPA for the projects will be a sole, will be the sole responsibility of the borrower and the city will have no financial or legal responsibility for the projects for repayment of the bonds. Staff has had, has the following observations and recommendations about the CMFA program. First, CMFA proposed to restrict units equally at the 80% AMI. First, CMFA proposed to restrict units equally at the eighty percent A M I, hundred percent A M I, and a hundred and twenty percent A M I payment and rent levels, in other words, thirty-three percent at each level. Over the case of sixteen H and Eleanor, a hundred and twenty percent A M I rents are above the existing downtown Sacramento market rents, and a hundred percent A M I rents are equal to existing market rents. Only the eighty percent A M I rents are below current market rents downtown. Due to this, staff is recommending more than thirty-three percent of the units be restricted at eighty percent A M I. Instead, staff proposes CMFA restricts forty percent of the units at eighty percent A M I, and the remainder at a hundred and a hundred and twenty percent A M I. In addition, staff recommends requiring all unit types to be split at the same percentages, ensuring that one and two bedrooms are not just studios, are also proportionally restricted to lower eighty percent A M I income levels. While staff would have ideally liked to see more than forty percent of the units restricted to eighty percent A M I, CMFA has informed us that the project would not generate, generates initial significant revenue to cover operating costs if these, if rents were reduced. Second, property tax revenue losses, um, are significant over time. Staff is unable to confirm the exact amount of tax revenue loss over the third, fifteen to thirty year period. Uh, the current assessed values for the projects will be approximately, uh, sixty-five million dollars. Uh, at one percent of value, that is approximately six hundred and fifty thousand of initial, uh, property tax revenue, which will not be distributed to the taxing entities annually. Third, CMFA originally proposed one J P A agreement with the city to undertake the middle income program and individual community benefit agreements for each project. Staff recommends a new J P A and community development agreement for each project, which requires city council approval. This will allow greater transparency and oversight, and S H R A will provide this project by project analysis for council. Uh, fourth, uh, no government regulations or oversight requirements have been adopted for this type of bond issuance. A CMFA will be the sole monitor, monitoring entity, assuring that incomes and rent limits are being enforced by the property manager. And finally, as the transaction fees and compensations are outlined in the report, um, including upfront and ongoing, um, annual fees, pays the owner, project sponsor, and property management company. While CMFA has established their fees for this project, um, staff recommends working with CMFA to lower fees that are sub- in subsequent projects. In addition, CMFA states that they will share a portion of the issuance fee it receives with its member communities. Staff recommends twenty-five percent of the issuance fee go to S H R A to cover the cost of analyzing the projects for city council. Any issuance fees received by S H R A above the cost of staff time will be put into, uh, finance, of financing of affordable housing. And CMFA further states they donate twenty-five percent of issuance fees to nonprofit, and staff recommends Sharp receive these fees. Sharp is a nonprofit corporation formed by the housing authority to pursue projects, um, as a strategic response to reduction in federal funding resources reductions for public housing. I should note that during our conversations with CMFA, they appear to be willing to accept most, if not all, of these staff recommendations. That concludes my presentation, and staff is happy to answer any questions you may have, and we'd like to receive some direction.
Okay, I'm gonna turn this over to Councilmember Valenzuela, who I know has worked hard on this one. Go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor, and, um, really appreciated working with your office and with S H R A and, um, CMFA on this. And I, I think before I give any comments, I'd love to turn it over. I see Ben Barker on the call, um, to maybe respond to any of the staff points or questions or recommendations, um, before we proceed any much.
Thank you, I'm Ben Barker. Thank you, uh, Mayor and council members for having us and for the opportunity to review this program. While this is a newer program to, obviously, the city of Sacramento and California, um, this type of financing has been around for quite a while. It's been a proven track record on the East Coast, and it's been morphed a little bit for G, J P As to own these transactions that keep, again, the city or counties from having any legal or moral or obligations with the debt that's included in it. Um, it's a pretty simple program, we're grateful for this time, uh, that the city of Sacramento is talking about affordable housing, the key elements from homeless to low income to middle income. This would obviously play a role to the middle income or slash workforce housing. We would hope that it would be able to house teachers, first responders, um, people that are living and working within the city of Sacramento. So, um, Sacramento obviously has an affordable housing shortage, and what this middle income opportunity does is puts an opportunity for people that are transitioning out of affordable housing into the next step. A lot of times, if you're living in affordable housing projects, they're very nice. If you've driven around, a lot of them, um, they're pretty easy to pick out. I've, CMFA has financed well over four hundred plus affordable housing projects and issued bonds on those, and they're usually the highlights of the neighborhood. But from there, when you let transition out of affordable housing, there's not a lot of great opportunities or equal, um, places to live. So this will be the first step in, um, allowing the middle income to move into, out of an affordable, or for the middle income residents to stay in, uh, the city of Sacramento. So the CMFA is asking to help establish this program by forming a new J P A with the city. Uh, the city is already has an existing J P A agreement with the CMFA, and the CMFA has issued bonds on well over ten, ten projects within the city. The ci- CMFA is not asking for any money, we're not asking for donations, grants, loans, um, we're not asking for any handouts to finance this project, it'll be solely financed through the CMFA. The CMFA will be the sole obligor on the, on the bonds, and it will not cause any risk or responsibilities, again, on the city. And then, um, the last part is, this, like was said, the CMFA shares, um, our issuance fees, um, with everybody that we do an issuance with. So twenty-five percent, we could go to the general fund, if the city would like the fees to go from the general fund to the S H N R A, CMFA has no problems with that. Um, the non, the other twenty-five percent of the fees that we would split generally goes to nonprofits, if the city would like to direct that to go to, um, the nonprofit that, um, staff listed, CMFA has no problems with that. Again, CMFA doesn't have any problems with the unit makeup of forty, twenty, and forty. We, we think the project can work with that. Um, we will, you know, with, with the city's direction, that we can move forward on approving this program, we'll start the underwriting process, but I'm, I'm highly confident that those numbers will work. And then, um, the public benefit, the last, last thing is the city will, will be asked to sign a public benefit agreement with the CMFA, and the public benefit agreement will clearly lay out that, what happens with the process and the, the issuance, once pro- the bonds are paid off, if the city wants the CMFA to sell the project, how the repayment of all the fees would, or the repayment of the excess money would go. So it'll clearly be laid out when the city approves this, I believe, hopefully at the next meeting. And with that, I can take any questions.
Thank you, Ben, I appreciate, I wanted to give this chance for you to respond, and I am really excited about this opportunity. I know the rents, um, some folks, some of my colleagues in other parts of the city may look at some of these rents and go, wow, that seems really high. Um, and I think if you are not a renter like myself and haven't glanced, I always glance because I'm curious, I see a fancy new project come up in the district, and I'm like, oh, how much would it cost for me to move into that unit? And it's pretty incredible, um, what rents are going for in our region right now. And so for this opportunity to come along and to say, hey, this is gonna cost us nothing, and we're basically gonna restrict these rents and keep it attainable for folks that are working in our city that we need, um, from the teachers, as Ben mentioned, to the, even the capital staff workers and other folks that really make our economy work in the central city, um, this is really exciting, um, for me. And I really wanna thank, again, the mayor's office, because, um, they did a lot of due diligence on this as well, S K K Development, who brought this to us, because it is an exciting opportunity to try something new, and if it works, um, hopefully it leads to a lot more opportunities, um, in the future. So with that, I would like to move, um, that we, uh, and I'm not sure how to phrase this, so maybe, or if this is, um, what I would need to phrase, so maybe, I don't know, the city attorney, if you'd like to, I would appreciate your guidance, but I think I'm moving to establish, to start moving on establishing a J P A. It's sort of the, I don't know if I even move, or if we're just providing the direction, but, yeah, I would like to move whatever I need to move forward. I don't see Susan on the screen, so I don't know if that's a better S H R A question.
Can we get some guidance on the exact motion? We just wanna make sure that all the timelines are met and the paperwork comes back, uh, in sufficient time to be able to, to, uh, actualize the, the intent of the recommendation here. So what is that? Ms. Dozier? We're interested.
What we would need is direction, um, from the council for us to come back with all of the official documents in, um, agreement with the recommendations that staff is making, um, for approval for the council.
Okay, thank you, um, Ms. Dozier. So I will move, um, to provide direction to S H R A to come back, um, following their recommendations in this with the J P A agreement with CMFA.
All right, I have Mayor Protem Ashby, um, and I'm gonna make a comment. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanna start by applauding Councilmember Valenzuela, and I suppose yourself, Mayor, for, uh, looking for creative funding sources. And I, and I would love to support this because I love where Councilmember Valenzuela is going with this idea, but I have tremendous concerns with the idea of the city of Sacramento entering into a J P A. First, the J P As are complicated, we have many of them, we don't normally do them with a for-profit entity. I'm concerned with the idea that we would be issuing bonds for two multifamily units that, some of which already exist, and there is a discussion around affordability, but it would appear to me, based on the staff report, that in order to achieve the low or affordable incomes you would be looking for, you'd have to do at least part of it through attrition, which could outlast the funding mechanism. I don't like the public loss of, the public benefit piece, which is the loss of property tax, so we basically justify this by taking them off of the property tax rolls, and I'm concerned with how that impacts other agencies too, and also how it would impact us if other agencies agreed to do this in the future, like what that looks like if the county did this to us, or any other public entity did this to us. It's a large-scale project in terms of cost, so it is a significant amount of property tax. I'm also concerned that we would be a non-voting member of a J P A. That, uh, sounds, um, complicated to me, and I don't like the idea of loss of control over the value of the land and what it would mean when the valuations come in for the sale of that land, which would have impacts on everything around it. There are some really great projects being looked at by startup developers in that same area, in, in Councilmember Valenzuela's district, that are also very exciting. And so for me, the risk is ju- just too great, I don't like the concept or feel comfortable with the concept of the city entering into that J P A, and therefore, I will not be supporting it today.
Thank you. Councilmember Vice Mayor Shenier, and then Councilmember Laloe.
Yeah, um, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I, I also have some concerns on this and haven't really had enough time to, to dive deeply into it. Let me just ask a, a question, has, for LaShelle, I guess, has this gone through the Housing Alliance, and do they have a recommendation? I know we've been working with them, certainly, on all the Stockton Boulevard work, um, but would love to see where they are on this, uh, effort or initiative.
No, we have not had enough, uh, time and opportunity to do that.
Okay, and when would, uh, when would a decision get made around, well, let me say, I echo a lot of, uh, of Pro- the Protem's, um, points, particularly around J P As. Um, we've had some luck with them, and sometimes they're very difficult and can be challenging. So I, I'd want us to have, um, more discussion just around that context of the structure of, of this. Um, and, and then as the fee system goes, when would that decision be made as well? Or is that a recommendation that comes back if this moves forward?
So the way the structure is now, is that the city would enter into the J P A, and then CMFA would either do diligence, um, and actually go through the underwriting of the project. So what we put before you is the information that was provided to us by CMFA, but we do not have our form, um, to go back in to really validate those numbers.
Okay. So for me, just as we get there, beyond costs that are incurred, any fees, um, I think should go to the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Uh, we're looking very hard, and the mayor just said it at our last item, that thirty-one million was a start, now, now twenty-one million. Um, we need to find additional dollars, and this may be one, but, but I would like to, us to have a longer discussion and a deeper discussion about this with a little bit more time.
Thank you. Sean, uh, Councilmember Laloe, before I turn it over to you, I think I'm gonna weigh in here, because I just wanna, to sort of take what I hear and, and respond to some. But I, I wanna say at the outset that I, um, believe we should go forward with this because I wanna put the money issue into context for just a moment. We get to rent protect a hundred and eighty units for fifteen years at a cost of twenty-five percent of the six hundred and fifty thousand dollar loss to the tax roll, twenty-five percent being our share. For a hundred and six, approximately a hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars a year, we get to rent protect a hundred and eighty units in the downtown, in the midtown area, where young people and people of all ages are having a hard time being able to even think about affording to, uh, being able to afford to live in the center of our city. There were three concerns, um, that were rightfully addressed by S H R A when this conversation started. I've been engaged with Councilmember Valenzuela, with the agency, and with, uh, the city manager and others to really work through some of this stuff, and here were the three concerns. Number one, that we would somehow be in legal jeopardy, and joining a J P A, somehow we could be liable, if you will, if something went wrong. And the answer from the city attorney, and I'm not speaking for her, but I'm just saying what I, what I heard, was that there is not a legal problem. And then we talked to the city treasurer and asked, is there any risk to our bond rating, our credit rating, uh, in any way? And the city treasurer came back and said, uh, he had no problem with this. And then the third issue with S, which S H R A raised, and on this one, I wanna give them a lot of credit, because what they said was, there's no guarantee in the structure that, um, there would be an actual distribution of the units, um, between eighty percent median income, a hundred percent median income, and one-twenty, and that in an unintended way, the, all of the units could be one-twenty. And the one-twenty is good, but it isn't that much lower than the market rate rent. So why would we give up the tax roll and do this new thing for a hundred and eighty units of, uh, of one-twenty? So, to their credit, S H R A engaged in the conversation with the Joint Powers Agency, and now has, as I understand, you can confirm this, a guarantee that it will not only be a third, third, a third, but better than that, they negotiated a better deal. They negotiated for forty percent of the units being at eighty percent or below median income. That's true affordable housing. So if you just take those units and look at the cost of, what, a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars a year to, to, to have dozens, forty percent of one-eighty, uh, of, of eighty percent or below housing, quality housing, the middle of our, uh, of our central city? I, I think we'd be missing a tremendous opportunity if we just said no to this, because you don't have all the answers, because we did ask the very questions that Councilmember Vice Mayor Shenier and Mayor Protem Ashby have asked, and I'm sure all the entities, the treasurer and the attorney can certainly speak for themselves, but they had no problem with this. And then the agency did a good job in ensuring that we could guarantee that most of the units, or at least forty percent of the units, would be for low-income tenants. Missed opportunity if we don't do this. Councilmember Laloe?
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Mayor. You know, I, I had to get myself somewhat familiarized with the G P As, and, um, I, as, um, Councilmember, um, Ashby alluded to, at first I thought I was reading a foreign language, so I had to kind of dig into it more, and I do agree, it does sound, sound somewhat complex. The property tax, um, yes, a hundred and sixty-two thousand, uh, in the scope of things, it doesn't sound that big.
The property tax, yes, 162,000, in the scope of things, it doesn't sound that big. But at the same time, I just want to make sure, what direction are we going? Is it, at what point? So I can understand affordable housing, and we're all concentrating on that. Now we're coming into middle-income housing to allow affordable rents in downtown where all surrounding downtown are extremely affordable. So where are we going to go at the next level? At one point or another, I think affordable housing, I'm all in, but middle-income housing, again, if it's downtown, I mean, any city you go to, the downtown has higher rents. That's why individuals move in the suburbs or around downtown. So what's the next level? Are we going to subsidize buying houses in downtown? And then we're looking at two properties that are pretty hefty. I mean, it's a $65 million property at the height of the real estate market. So is this the right time to get involved in a project like that when we know that real estate is on steroids right now? So those are my concerns, and hopefully, as we get more information, I can think about it in a different way. But as of right now, it's with everything that we have, with all the challenges that we have and we're facing, it's hard for me to support this program.
Okay, thank you. I have Councilmember Gedda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a couple of questions here for SHRA. What is 80% AMI here in Sacramento right now? What income are we talking about, and what kind of AMI?
Councilor, that's, so SHRA derives our income limits from head and from the State Department of Housing and RE Development. And so I could give you those numbers. They, you know, they have a lot of assumptions in them.
Sure.
And that's not necessarily the way CMFA goes about their numbers, but let me get that for you. Just one moment. So it's a little, I don't want to speak for CMFA, but...
Yeah, you don't have to give me like the four per, what is it for a family of four or family two, but just generally.
Absolutely. So for, well, do you want rents or income? Sorry.
Yeah, income.
Income. Sorry, should I have that out for you?
If you have.
So for a family of four, although I don't think we'd see a family of four in the...
Or family of two or three, whatever.
Family of two, it's $56, or $55,000 a year for a family of two at 80%.
That's 80%. Okay. And then add 100%.
A family of two, $69,000 a year.
$69,000, and then a family of 120.
$82,000 a year.
$82,000.
Oh, it's 83.
$83,000. So, you know, really, what we're talking about is a lot of our workforce, and we're talking teachers, we're talking clerical workers, we're talking all of the support structure and family that maintains our downtown and income area. And, you know, so we're not talking about extremely low income, but what we're saying is our basic, you know, working middle class can't even afford to live in the area where they are supporting and trying to maintain the economy. And so I think it's, you know, I think this is an approach that, that all I'm hearing is, let's provide direction to see if this is a good method to go. Try to look to see if we have an opportunity for downtown so it doesn't turn into San Francisco, or it doesn't turn into LA where I, you know, would go down there and work and see how families had to commute an hour to get to their work. And so to me, I think, you know, this is an important opportunity for us to begin to move forward and try it out because it provides the diversity of families that live in the downtown area. So I don't, I think not looking at this, I think is short-sighted, and not pursuing a supporting direction to move forward is short-sighted. I do agree that the fees should come into our housing trust fund. I will, I think Councilmember Chenier's that is correct. We should try to control that aspect of it. But there have been folks on this council and others who have criticized the loss of redevelopment, and that was poaching money from other agencies. So I think, you know, and we've bemoaned how other agencies have not been wanting to participate in their share, and I think this is a good balance. I mean, we have to be nimble in looking at opportunities, and I'm not, I'm not saying, and maybe that this is a panacea here, but it's definitely, I think, worth trying and exploring. So with that, I'll second the motion, but I would like to see that any kind of fees collected do go to our City Housing Trust Fund and make sure that we have control of that. As we move forward in the development of the JPA, I think that's where we can draft in the control structures to ensure the city's control and reduction in liability. But if the city attorney, if the city treasurer don't have significant concerns, then it's up to us to address the issues of what happens to the fees, and then also what management and what JPA structure we want to develop. With that, I'll second the motion.
Okay. Who was next, Madam Clerk?
From Councilmembers Ben Barker raised his hand, but also Harris, Ashby, then Valenzuela.
Councilman Harris, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, at first glance, this seems like it has really a lot of goals, and thank you, Katie, for your work on this. I know that you have the best interests of friends at heart. There's no doubt about it. And we do have a real big, I'm sorry, my video was off. We do have a big affordability crisis in this city. It's indisputable. I do have a question, though. Mr. Colville, are you on the line? Is our treasurer here in the meeting?
Yes, I can see this video, but we can't hear you, John. I'm not sure if Mindy has unmuted.
We'll take our time. Mr. Colville.
John, your lips are moving, but nothing's coming out.
So the audio issue is on Mr. Colville's side.
Where's your treasurer when you need him?
Mr. Colville, if you'll click the arrow to the right of your unmute a microphone button, you should be able to choose a microphone.
How about now?
Got it.
Gotcha.
Switching from Zoom to Teams to everything, anyway, yeah, we were surprised, I've had some email conversations going between the city attorney's office and myself, that we were surprised that this came to council so rapidly. We met with LaShelle and her team last week to talk about it. We came up with some concerns. We were going to do more due diligence, and it shows up on the council meeting. So we've been approached by similar programs in the past, and we haven't done them just to the fact that we're not a voting member of the JPA. There's really no economy of scales generated from entities as big as the city of Sacramento. There's no other large cities involved in any of these. City of San Jose's staff just submitted to their council to not participate. We're meeting with them next week to talk about their concerns. I'm not saying this is a bad program, Councilman Harris. I just think we need more time to review it, and I didn't realize it was coming to council a week after we had an initial conversation with SHRA.
Okay, well, thank you, John. I appreciate that. You know, again, at first glance, this looks like it could be a good deal, but it is a rather adventurous approach. I see that Sotiri seems to be a big fan of it, so that would tend to move me in that direction. But I would actually like to see more full analysis of what this means, and I think even SHRA, you know, mentioned that they haven't had time to do all the research that they might want to do. I would hope that the direction is to bring this back for another discussion before it comes back for a vote. I think it does need a little bit more scrutiny. I have some of the hesitations that are Protem and Councilmember Chenier have. I find myself wanting just a little bit more information before being confronted with a vote. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, very good. We do have a couple other members here. Who is up?
Mayor Protem Ashby, then Valenzuela and Vang.
Okay.
Thank you. So I just wanted to say, I think if the motion goes forward today as presented, I'll be voting no, but if you would like to do it, some of the others have recommended, Councilmember, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Chenier and Councilmember Harris and Luloe have all suggested that perhaps some more due diligence and then bring it back. I could potentially support that. However, I would like to ask the city attorney a question. Susanna, are you there?
Hi, I'm Councilmember.
Okay, great. Have you and your office had enough time? I understand you've had one meeting, but it sounds like, according to the city treasurer, that you all were taken a bit by surprise that this was on the agenda today. The staff report, I think, was added yesterday, and I want to ask you, one, do you need more time to vet it, and two, if not, can you tell us with certainty that there is no legal liability in this process for the city of Sacramento?
Well, I think because it's an SHRA, I don't, we didn't see it, we don't always see them, and so it did catch us by surprise. We were in the middle of doing our due diligence following the meeting we had that Treasurer Colville referenced that we were also at. There's low risk to the city, legal risk. It's not accurate to say that there's no risk. There is a low risk to the city. We have preliminarily opined that this is something the city could enter into, but there is significant analysis that should happen, most particularly on the policy side, which I think Treasurer Colville was referencing, and we have not completed our analysis. It's typically our process by which we will then provide a formal memo to the council with our recommendations, and we have just not had a chance to finish that.
Okay, that was my question. So it sounds like it would, it sounds to me, based on what we're hearing, that we need to give our professional staff some more time to come back to us with review on this because the liability question isn't clear, the finance treasurer's position is not clear. SHRA has clearly done their work here, but they need the support of the city staff as well, and they were surprised that it landed here. That's the way I'm reading this. So I don't know, I know Councilmember Valenzuela's up next, and I'll leave it to her on how she thinks to proceed, but that's where I'm at, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll turn it over to Councilmember Valenzuela with maybe a suggestion about how we move forward here. Go ahead.
Yeah, and I want to make clear that the motion, as I understand it, is to ask staff to come back, right, with an item that we would vote on that would actually move it forward. So what I'm asking is not that we say, yes, let's move forward today because it wasn't a lot of time. I had the privilege of knowing what was coming because I was in some of these meetings, but I do appreciate that a lot of my colleagues on the call, I mean, this is a really dense and complex thing, and all meant, I mean, this is a whiteboard moment for me where I just need to sit down and like write things out because it's like, how are all these pieces going to fit together? And I want to give people time to be able to look at it and feel good about moving forward. And so the motion today is not to say, we're doing this. The motion today is, hey, SHRA, can you take the next step and bring this back to us? Which at that time, we would consider whether or not we wanted to actually do it, which we could talk about timeline in terms of giving our staff sufficient time to review as well. So I just wanted to make that super clear and see if that alleviates some of my colleagues' concerns. I'm not, the motion today is not to say, we're doing it. The motion today is to say, come back.
Councilmember Valenzuela, maybe I could make it even a little bit easier because this item is agendized as a receive and file, and so I'm not sure a motion for anything is necessary. I think what we're doing here, and we're doing a pretty good job of it, is providing direction, and I think the direction is to come back with some definitive answers to the questions that have been raised here. Then there's the question of the timeline. I know we are working with the JPA as well as the developer here, and I think we want to have some consultation with them as well, and then bring this back in a timely way that maintains the potential that we can go forward if the council, after hearing the answers to the questions, decides to move forward. And so no motion necessary. I think we're, I think we've given pretty good direction here, and we'll work, I'll work with you, and we'll work with everybody in the city team here to bring this back on a date specific, once we're confident that our professionals can provide the information ahead of time to all of the members. Fair? Okay. I think that...
Sorry, I wasn't sure if you were ready for me to respond.
No, that's fine. You're okay with that. We don't have to take a vote before it's time, okay?
Yeah, my intention is if this comes back, and so whether it's a motion or it's direction, that was the intention today.
No motion necessary. The direction has been given, I think, in some detail. We have two more members, though, who want to give even more direction. So go ahead. Who is that?
Hey, Mayor, it's Councilwoman Vang. No direction, just wanted to provide some comment, and just wanted to uplift that I really appreciate the creativity of Councilwoman Valenzuela and also you to really address the middle households. I think we heard from the city attorney that it is low risk, and I appreciate that there will be further analysis, but I do appreciate the creativity because I think it's also another strategy really to respond to the changing demographics and, you know, provide solutions to a really diverse range of income and generational housing needs. So I'm super excited about this, and I understood the direction as coming back for future actions, so really look forward to voting on this item after we have the analysis. And again, just want to say thank you to Councilwoman Valenzuela for her creativity to find, you know, find different tactics so that we can really address the housing needs here in our state. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barker, did you, you were online from the JPA. Did you have one other comment before we move on?
Sure. You know, again, thank you for the time that the council and the mayor you guys have put poor today in listening to the item. It sounds like there is a little bit of more enlightenment that needs to be shared. The CMFA has brought this forward for a little while ago, and I know this has been kind of bounced around over the past year with some of the other groups. So there are a few points that I'd like to make just to clear up any kind of confusion. First, the city of Sacramento is already a member of the CMFA. You've been a member for 10-plus years. The CMFA has done over 10 projects in the city of Sacramento. All of those have been brought forward before the board for what's called a TAFRA hearing, and the board has unanimously approved all of our TAFRA items previously. So that's the first thing. CMFA, again, we've done over 1,000 issuances. We have 100% of our projects in compliance. We have no projects that are, no of our affordable housing projects have ever been in default or out of compliance. The next was a comment about for-profits. Again, the CMFA is a governmental agency. We're not a for-profit, we're not a for-profit company. We are buying this project and self-restricting, working with SHRA, the units to create affordable housing into, create that middle-market housing. We're not here looking to make big profits as a for-profit here. We're a governmental agency, and we have been a part of your JPA, or you've been a part of our JPA with us for 10-plus years. The part about the control, again, the city is in control of the project, what's called through a public benefit agreement, and the public benefit agreement outlines the way that the city can be in control with the project, and then that will be memorialized in what's called a regulatory agreement that is recorded at the county and will ensure the rent restrictions that the city has agreed to, or the city would like us to agree to, I'm sorry. So the affordability will retain in place for the next 30 years and will be recorded in a regulatory agreement, which is the same type of structure that has been done with all of SHRA's affordable projects and the 450-plus CMFA affordable housing projects that we have, we have done. And the one other thing is, yes, there has been a few large housing authorities in large cities that have said no to this program. The CMFA has never had a housing authority say, no, we are not named in any of the reports that are out. There's a few reports kind of floating around. The CMFA has steered clear and has not been named in a single report. Furthermore, a lot of the large housing authorities has asked the CMFA to help them establish this program, and doing this as a single purpose, just moving forward with the CMFA as opposed to the other few groups that are in it. So we do want to make sure that that's clear, that the CMFA is not in any of the negative reports, her name's not mentioned, and we would hope to continue to working with... and doing this as a single purpose, just moving forward with the CMFA as opposed to the other few groups that are in it. So we, we do want to make sure that that's clear, that the CMFA is not in any of the negative reports, our name's not mentioned. And, um, we would hope to continue to working with a, SHNRA, city council's direction, government, or the mayor's direction on that. And again, I'm here happy to answer any questions and, uh, we will, you know, we'll move forward with that.
Okay. Hey, to, today has been a very productive discussion because we floated a new concept. We put it out there, a lot of questions asked. Now let's get them more fully answered and let's have a great discussion and debate and see how we want to move forward. Councilmember Laloie, you had a question.
Actually, uh, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Baker answered them during his, um, uh, explanation of the process. So thank you very much.
Mayor, can I ask Mr. Barker one question, please?
Yes, of course.
Just a quick one. Where, I, I didn't see it in the report, it could have been in there, but, uh, Mr. Barker, where are you from? What, where are you from?
Carlsbad, California.
Okay.
The, and the CMFA has, um, 350, almost 400 members throughout the state of California. Cities, counties, special districts, authorities. And, and just as a note of reference, the CMFA is the largest affordable housing issuer in the state. We do, you know, just if you look at the state's website, you can see that CMFA is the largest bond issuer in the state. We submit more projects than the rest of the state combined. On top of that, we have a lot of other financing experience. The CMFA issued the bonds for LAX Airport, uh, San Diego Zoo, the entire, um, school district consortium of Claremont, a number of regional and health facilities throughout the state. So the CMFA has a pretty broad experience, um, with affordable housing as well as lots of other sophisticated financings. We are constantly in the public markets, um, doing public offerings.
That's great, thanks for the answer. My point is just that those places in San Diego are all also near Carlsbad. So, you know, we're in Sacramento and our housing and redevelopment agency reinvests back in this community. And so when those tax dollars come off of the tax roll and go into SHRA, they go back into our community, which is just something I just want to consider. It doesn't mean it's a deal breaker, just something to consider.
Yeah, and, and again, the CMFA has already done lots of projects in the city of Sacramento. Um, lots of schools and healthcare facilities located in the city of Sacramento. As well as the county too.
Okay. Any other, any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure I'm clear. So we're going to wait for a report to come back to us?
We are, and we're gonna, the city ma-
Direction, and then are we going to do a voting right there? Or is the council going to have enough time to analyze the, the, the report?
Well, certainly we're going to do this in a way that the council has an opportunity to analyze everything. But that has to be balanced with the, the project deadlines here. Because we want to make sure that if the council is interested in this opportunity, that we don't miss the window. So we're going to balance those two things and I'll work with the city manager. And we will set this, but only set it when we have, uh, that information. And we'll have it out to the council ahead of time, um, so that there's plenty of time to be able to understand the implications of, of, of the opportunity that we have before us.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. That is, um, the item, the, the item, and that is the council agenda for the day. Um, we do not have public testimony and items not on the agenda. Uh, but we do have, uh, council ideas and questions, and I, I have one. So might as well get right to it, as if we, uh, if we haven't had enough, uh, uh, discussion about housing and housing projects today, I've got another one for us. Um, I have been approached by, um, the Mutual Housing, um, Association, who are the developers for the 150-unit project in, uh, the rail yards. And they are asking for consideration for $3.5 million out of our housing trust fund to make them more competitive in the next round of, uh, of 4% housing tax credit, uh, uh, competition. The deadline for, uh, that round is May the 25th. The rail yards, um, is a, uh, very important opportunity site for us as a city for a variety of reasons. For a variety of reasons. And I would like, um, SHRA, please to, uh, agendize this item for next week. I would ask them to please work in collaboration with, um, the city manager's side, uh, and, and our housing department here, uh, so that we can bring this back. Um, and I want to make sure that, um, we work over these next couple of days, uh, to ensure that the council members have all the information that they will need to make a decision on, um, this opportunity. It's $3.5 million as opposed to the 10, for example, that we proudly just did on the Stockton Boulevard project. But, um, it's important opportunity project for a variety of reasons. And, um, I would like to have that come back next Tuesday on our city council agenda, please. Any other council ideas and questions?
Mayor, I have an adjourned memory.
Yes.
Eric, can I go before that, Eric? Would you mind? Thank you, I appreciate it. Uh, Mayor, I, I agree with you, uh, about what you just asked to bring back to council. This is an important project. The cost per door is very reasonable, I think. We did not build the housing trust fund to sit on it, we built it to use it. And this is a project that really does need to go forward. Um, so I support you completely in, in your suggestion that we bring this back next week. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Uh, if there's any, nobody else, I will let, uh, Councilmember Geta adjourn in memory of a great Californian. Councilman Geta?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and, uh, Ms. Cuppy. If you can, uh, share some of the photos provided by the family, would greatly appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, today I, uh, I asked that we adjourn, uh, in memory of, uh, California Supreme Court, it's out California, uh, Justice Cruz Reynoso. On May 7th, this Friday, this past Friday, former California Supreme Court Associate Justice, law professor of UC Davis, civil rights activist, and just a lovely, warm-hearted person. Cruz Reynoso passed away at the age of 90, surrounded by his family. Uh, he was born in 1931 in Brea, California, uh, to Francisca Ramirez Reynoso and Juan Reynoso. Uh, Cruz was one of 11 children. And, uh, along him with his brothers and his father, they were migrant farmworkers and something I, I can closely relate to. And mu- like many of them, followed the fruit and harvest around to, uh, to make ends meet. Um, after, uh, you know, after high school, Cruz decided to go to college and attend Fullerton Community College and then Pomona College. But before that, he attended a segregated school, uh, where only Latinos were, or Latinos were, uh, in that school and they weren't allowed to go to the, the neighboring school. Uh, Cruz was drafted, uh, later into the US Army, where he served in the Counterintelligence Corps. Uh, and while serving in the army, Cruz was stationed in Washington DC where he first met his, his wife, his first wife, uh, Janine Harness. Uh, they married in 1956 and raised four children together. Janine passed away in 2007 and, and then in 2008 Cruz married again to Elaine Rowan. Elaine, you know, also passed away recently in 2017. You know, Cruz earned his law degree also at, uh, my apologies here, at Bolt Hall, uh, in, um, UC Berkeley, California in 1958. After which he practiced law in El Centro, California. And, and in 1968 Cruz became the Director of the California Rural Legal Assistance. A few were here earlier this afternoon seeing our actions in the Budget and Audit Committee. He would have been very proud of this council, uh, to support the efforts that CRLA Foundation and CRLA have been doing. He was an advocate statewide and understood that he could use the legal profession to fight for the rights of folks. And in 1972 Cruz became a law professor, um, uh, for University of Mexico. When shortly after, in 1976, Governor Brown, first time, the first Governor Brown, uh, uh, in his first term, appointed him to, uh, be Justice of the Third Court, Third District Court of Appeals. And in eight, and in 1982 Brown appointed him later to be the first Mexican-American to serve in the state Supreme Court. Uh, leaving the court in 1987, Cruz practiced law once again in, and in 1991 Cruz began teaching at UCLA. And in 2001, here at UC Davis, um, you know, uh, the, until about 20, until about, uh, 2017, Cruz was accepted and taught right across the river here. Cruz worked for, uh, the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission under the Johnson administration. He was appointed by President Carter to serve on the Congressional Select Commission on Immigration and Refugee Policy. President Clinton appointed Cruz to be the Vice Chair of the US Commission on Civil Rights. And in 2000, he gave Cruz the Presidential Medal of Freedom for his work in social justice. Cruz also served for the Bo- the Baracka, Obama, the Barack Obama Administration Transition Team. His life, his passion was creating more justice in society. He fought for equal rights for un- for underrepresented populations, legal assistance for the poor, working rights, immigration reform and voting rights. And I, even until recently, I remember going on Friday mornings at 8:00 AM to the Waffle Square on 10th, uh, Street, uh, and I believe Esther, uh, where he will put together a group of, uh, of folks who wanted to do more voter education outreach. And when not fighting le- legal ba- battles, he loved working on his ranch and talked about, you know, how much he cared for his animals and the, the work he did. Abby Ginsburg pronounced an award-winning film about Cruz's life titled Sowing the Seeds of Justice. You know, Cruz, uh, cared a lot about young people. And I remember as a teenager, uh, he would go to the, the, um, farmworking communities and in Yolo County would pull together all the migrant farmworking kids to talk to them about resiliency and hope. And, uh, you know, back then I remember seeing him, um, you know, being so humble and honest and would have never thought that this, this person was, uh, a presidential appointee or anything. He was just a person who cared about kids. And taught us the word ganas. Ganas, you know, it's a, it's a word about resiliency and hope. Um, man, such a guy with a big heart. Cruz, uh, cared a lot about a community. Uh, he survived by his brother, four sisters, his four children, their spouses, Trina. Uh, he had 17 grandchildren, uh, cared a lot about, uh, family and love. Uh, a very, very great leader, uh, here, our own here locally community. We renamed it, uh, renamed, uh, the, uh, the, uh, La Raza Lawyers Association as the Cruz Reynoso Bar Association. Very influential person here in our region, uh, a great Californian, great American. I was honored to be sworn in the, to office in this chambers by him. I'd like to adjourn in memory of one of America's greatest heroes, Cruz Reynoso, Chief Justice of, uh, uh, I mean, Justice of California Supreme Court. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Geta. Every word was worth the time because Cruz Reynoso was a giant, a giant. Um, and, uh, we'll all do well to learn about him and to live by his example. Thank you for the adjourned in memory, in memory of Justice Cruz Reynoso. If there's nothing else to come before the Sacramento City Council, 10 minutes to 5, we are adjourned.